The council will come to order. Please use the e-vote application to record your presence at this time. And if you have any issues logging in, please raise your hand and members of the clerk's team will come in and assist you.
The quorum roll call is now open. Please mark yourself present from your device. If you need help logging in, please raise your hand and we'll send someone over. I am now going to call on those aldermen who have not marked themselves present. If you need help, please, please raise your hand. Alderman Mitchell needs help. Alderman Burke. Alderman Coleman is getting help. Alderman David Moore is getting help. Alderman Alonato, not here. Alderman Ramirez, oh, you got yours. Alderman Napolitano, I will mark you present. Please also do it on your device. Alderman Tunny, did you cast your present? Yep. Alderman Tunny, I will mark you present. Alderman Napolitano, I'll mark you present. Alderman Coleman, I will mark you present. I think that's it. I think I got everyone. Okay. Alderman Coleman. Coleman. Scott, you got Coleman?
Kirsten and Alonato.
Okay. The quorum roll call is now closed.
All members present have been recorded. There are 47 members present and three absent. We have a quorum. Ladies and gentlemen, before we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and the prayer, I think many people in this moment are concerned about the mass shootings that we've seen over these last two weeks. Most recently, last night in Texas, that to date, we know, have claimed the lives of 19 children. Previously, in Buffalo, New York, another mass shooting. And twice here, recently in Chicago, in back of the yards and at Chicago State. I will say, from my own personal perspective, the fact that these guns continue to be in the hands of young people, teenagers, and in some instances, younger, and the fact that there are no consequences anywhere in our country for the manufacturers who are profiting greatly at our expense. Something must be done. We offer up thoughts and prayers. Cities like Chicago, like New York, like Los Angeles and others are awash in illegal guns that are destroying and tearing at the very fabric of our city. Having made calls to mothers and loved ones who have been absolutely devastated, devastated by their child, their loved one, being cut down in their prime as a result of someone with a gun who should never had a gun, we have to think about, as a city, but also as a country, what we are prepared to tolerate any second longer. Those parents down there in Texas will be devastated for the rest of their lives. Same with Buffalo, but also same on too frequent a basis here in the city of Chicago. No one has a magic answer. Not one mayor, not one city council can solve this problem of illegal guns being in the hands, or legally purchased guns, being in the hands of people who have no good intent other than to cause mass destruction. This is a complicated issue, as you all know, but it's one that I think we can't just pass over and act as business as usual. So I commend Alderman Rodriguez for reaching out this moment and asking that we take a moment as a body, have a moment of silence, to reflect upon what's happening. And I would urge that we recommit ourselves together, together, to work towards solutions. So if you'll join me in a moment of silence for the victims, for their families, and Thank you. Now, please affirm with me the Pledge of Allegiance, which I think, the words of which will have even more important meaning this morning. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God and with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing and the invocation will be delivered by Rabbi Seth Lemer. Rabbi?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Clerk Valencia. After that moment of silence, after the mayor's important words about the horrors coming out of Texas yesterday, I'm tempted to begin with the words of Isaiah. "Let us beat our swords into plowshares and our spears into pruning hooks." That is what we think when 19 children, babies, are murdered at their elementary school. That is what we think when a 16-year-old Shondell Holliday gets shot down in the center of our city on an early Saturday night, when there's a mass shooting in back of the yards or outside a McDonald's in our downtown district. Those words aren't enough. 19 children were killed yesterday at the Abbott Elementary School. 17 human beings have been killed in Austin this year. 16 in Auburn Gresham. 14 on South Shore. 12 in New City. 11 in West Englewood. 11 in West Pullman. And tragically as well, one young man at the Bean. The 218 homicides in the city we are charged to care for, 203 are black and brown human beings. And it is easy to think that we are facing a crisis of guns when an 18-year-old can acquire two AK-47 and mow down children in an elementary school. But I believe what we are facing instead is a crisis of security. What we are hearing from our young people is that there are no safe spaces for them in our city. There are few places, especially with school ending, where our young people can go during the day and be held and be kept and enjoy their youth. There are almost no places where our young people can go at night and enjoy being a teenager in all those borderline inappropriate ways as opposed to the tragic ones. The question is not how we keep them, or rather, how we keep us safe from them, but how we hold these young people and keep them secure in vocation and in recreation with programs and opportunities, with love and care and enduring support. There is a lot before you today as a city council of tremendous and potentially lasting impact on our city, but nothing, I would argue, is more important than seeing to the security of every single young person in the city of Chicago. And I want to remind you that in this city of broad shoulders, we have enough and we are enough to see that this happens and to see that this happens now. And so instead of Isaiah's words, I want to leave you with the words of his colleague and compatriot, Tamika. "Let every human being sit in security and plenty, each under their own vine and their own fig tree, and let none be afraid." Amen.
Mr. Clerk?
The council will now begin the public comment period, which is limited to a maximum of 30 minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Speakers cannot yield or transfer their time to another speaker. Any written comments that have been submitted will be posted and made available for automatic review. The first speaker today is Elizabeth Moreno.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Elizabeth Moreno. Soy una recamarera en el Holiday Inn Mart Plaza Hotel aquí en Chicago.
Good morning. My name is Elizabeth Moreno. I'm a room attendant at the Holiday Inn Mart Plaza Hotel here in Chicago.
Llevo 23 años trabajando ahí. Estoy orgullosa de ser miembro de mi unión, United Here Local One.
I have worked there for 23 years. I am proud to be a member of my union, Unite Here Local One.
Vivo en Hermosa, en el Distrito 31. Soy dueña de mi casa donde vivo con mi hija de 18 años.
I live in Hermosa, in the 31st Ward. I own my house where I live with my 18-year-old daughter.
Gracias a mi unión. Tengo un trabajo que me permitió comprar mi casa y crear un futuro mejor para mí y para mi hija.
Thanks to my union, I have a job that let me buy my house and make a better future for me and for my daughter.
Las trabajadoras emigrantes como yo merecemos buenos trabajos con un buen seguro médico.
Immigrant workers like me deserve good jobs with good health insurance.
El casino de Chicago creará oportunidades para cientos de trabajadoras. Es urgente que la ciudad de Chicago actúe ahora para mejorar las vidas de trabajadoras emigrantes como yo. Muchas gracias.
The Chicago Casino will create opportunities for hundreds of workers. It is urgent that the city of Chicago act now to improve the lives of immigrant workers like me. Thank you.
Gracias and thank you, Ms. Moreno, for your comments. Our next speaker is Felicia Smith.
Good morning. My name is Felicia Smith and I work as a barista at Starbucks at O'Hare Airport. I've been working there for nine years and I am a member of my union, Unite Here Local One. I grew up on the west side of Chicago and now I live in the 6th Ward on the south side with my mom, my little sister, and my three kids. Because of my union, I have great health insurance, which means that I get great service when I go to the doctor. I know that my neighborhood would be more stable, stronger, and safer with more good union hospitality jobs at the Chicago Casino. I'd like to thank Alderman Sawyer for your yes vote for the Chicago Casino on Monday. Now I hope that you will all vote yes for the Chicago Casino. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith, for your comments. Our next speaker is Tina Graham.
Good morning. My name is Tina Graham. I am a proud member of Unite Here Local One. I live in the 50th Ward with my husband and grandchildren. I am a Native American Indian and was born in Sioux City, Iowa, and we moved to Chicago due to the Indian Relocation Act of 1956. Life was tough for me and my family when we got to Chicago. Now I have a good job as a room attendant at the Palmer House Hilton, where I worked for 15 years. My union job has provided me with stable and job security, stability and job security. Bringing the casino to would give more workers like me a chance for good, stable jobs with good health insurance for their families. Nobody should have to worry about how to provide care for their loved ones. Thank you to Alderman Silverstein for standing up for hospitality workers and voting yes for Chicago casinos. I hope the Chicago City Council will take the next step in support of Chicago's casinos to help more hospitality workers like me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Graham, for your comments. Our next speaker is Esther Morales.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Esther Morales. Soy una recamarera en el Crown Plaza Hotel aquí en Chicago.
Good morning. My name is Esther Morales. I'm a room attendant at the Crown Plaza here in Chicago.
Llevo 18 años trabajando ahí. Estoy orgullosa de ser un miembro de mi unión, United Here Local One.
I've worked there for 18 years. I am proud to be a member of my union, Unite Here Local One.
Vivo en la Villa en el Distrito 12 con toda mi familia.
I live in Little Village in the 12th Ward with all of my family.
Gracias a mi unión. Tengo un trabajo que me permite mantener a mi familia y ayudar a mis padres.
Thanks to my union, I have a job that lets me support my family and help my parents.
Pero la pandemia ha sido lo más terrible que yo he visto.
But the pandemic has been the most terrible thing that I've seen.
Muchos de mis compañeros todavía no han regresado al trabajo.
Many of my coworkers still haven't returned to work.
Muchas personas necesitan buenos trabajos ahora.
Many people need good jobs now.
El casino de Chicago creará oportunidades para cientos de trabajadores como yo.
The Chicago Casino will create opportunities for hundreds of workers like me.
Muchas gracias a mi concejal, Alderman Cárdenas, por su voto a favor del casino el lunes.
I'd like to thank my alderman, Alderman Cárdenas, for voting yes for the Chicago Casino on Monday.
Es urgente que el Chicago City Council también vote por sí al casino de Chicago. Gracias.
It is urgent that the Chicago City Council also vote yes for the Chicago Casino. Thank you.
Gracias and thank you, Ms. Morales, for your comments. Our next speaker is Yolanda Garduno.
Hola, buenos dias. Mi nombre es Yolanda Garduño. Vivo también en la Villa, en el Distrito 12, con mi esposo, mis hijos, y mi nieto.
Good morning. My name is Yolanda Garduño. I live in Little Village in the 12th District with my husband, my two kids, and my grandson.
Soy miembro de mi unión, Unite Here Local One.
I'm a member of my union, Unite Here Local One.
Más que nada, tener la unión me garantiza que me traten como un ser humano en el trabajo.
More than anything, the union guarantees that I am treated like a human being at work.
El casino elevará los trabajos a un nivel de dignidad del que podamos estar orgullosos.
The casino will elevate workers to a level of dignity of which they can be proud.
Más trabajos bien pagados y con un buen seguro médico beneficiará a toda la ciudad y a todas nuestras comunidades.
More well-paying jobs with good health insurance will benefit all of the city and all of our communities.
Quiero agradecer al concejal Cárdenas por votar el lunes que sí al casino.
I'd like to thank my alderman, Cárdenas, for voting yes on the Chicago Casino on Monday.
Y hoy espero que todo el Chicago City Council vote por sí por el casino de Chicago. Muchas gracias.
Today, I hope that the Chicago City Council votes yes for the Chicago Casino. Thank you.
Gracias and thank you, Ms. Garduno, for your comments. Our next speaker is Ofelia Martinez.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Ofelia Martinez. Soy attendant for Public Areas in the Park Hyatt Hotel in Chicago.
Good morning. My name is Ofelia Martinez. I'm a public areas attendant at the Park Hyatt Hotel here in Chicago.
Llevo más de 20 años trabajando ahí.
I've worked there for more than 20 years.
Soy miembro de mi unión, Unite Here Local One.
I'm a member of my union, Unite Here Local One.
Vivo en Belmont Craig in the Distrito 30.
I live in Belmont Craig in the 30th Ward.
Tengo cuatro hijas, dos hijos, y 11 nietos.
I have four daughters, two sons, and 11 grandkids.
Nueve trabajan y dos todavía son niños.
None of them are working and two of them are still kids.
Todos viven en Chicago.
All of them live here in Chicago.
Mi buen trabajo en unión no solo me asegura respeto, en el trabajo también me permite mantener a mi familia.
My good union job doesn't just assure me respect on the job, it also allows me to raise my family.
El casino de Chicago creará oportunidades para cientos de trabajadores que necesitan esperanza.
The Chicago Casino will create opportunities for hundreds of workers who need hope.
Espero que el Chicago City Council puede votar sí por el Chicago Casino. Muchas gracias.
I hope that the Chicago City Council will vote yes for the Chicago Casino. Thank you very much.
Gracias and thank you, Ms. Martinez, for your comments. Our next speaker is Alexander Williams.
Good morning. My name is Alexander Williams. I worked for 12 years as a saute cook at Macaroni Grill at O'Hare Airport. I am also a member of the executive board for my union, Unite Here Local One. I was born and raised on the west side of Chicago and I still live in the 28th Ward. I would like to also take this time to thank Alderman Urban for voting yes on the Chicago casinos on Monday. Appreciate that. I want to be able to retire and live comfortably. I have the legacy that I could pass on. I want to be able to say that I made changes, not only in my life, but in my community as well. The Chicago Casino will not only create jobs, but good jobs, where people can enjoy their work and earn a good living. These jobs will be the gold standard for hospitality in our fields, jobs that can provide stability and a future for our people in our community. Hey, the bottom line of this day is that these jobs will be the jobs that people can be proud of. I really hope that the city of Chicago and the city council will vote yes on the Chicago casinos today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams, for your comments. Our next speaker is Fabiola Rivera.
Good morning. My name is Fabiola Rivera. I live in Albany Park in the 33th Ward with my sister and my husband and my four kids. My sister and I are room attendants at the Westin River North Downtown Chicago. I've been working there for 15 years. I'm a member of my union, Unite Here Local One. My dream is to complete the American dream, to have my own home and move my children forward. If more people had jobs like mine, they could stay in Albany Park and don't be displaced. The casino will create good jobs and more opportunities for my community. I hope the Chicago City Council will vote yes for the Chicago Casino. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rivera, for your comments. Our next speaker is Mama D. Evangel.
Hello, you greetings. I'm Evangel, Mama D. Nubian, a crimes against humanity descendant, Jim Crow genocide survivor, representing advocates for indigenous Native Black American rights. The violence of abortion is a family affair. Men weigh in. A woman loses her right to choose when she becomes a three-in-one trinity, representing the human family, consisting of eggs, sperm, and the living souls that they created. Family is the foundation for human life to continue existence on earth. Life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness is an inelible right that comes from the Creator, not the Constitution. Opting to be childish is a choice that many women are making that impacts abortion. Men have a more responsibility to protect the family that his body is part of. Both fathers and mothers deserve honor. During enslavement, 90% of the babies born were to girls ages 12 to 13. 80% of them were fathered by the white slave owner who just walked away. The enslavement mothers loved their babies because it was part of them and a sign of hope. Fathers have as much right to choose life for his sacred seed as mothers have a right to choose death. I think if society wants to stop the spirit of senseless violence, it should start with abortion. And the teaching of sex education that begins in kindergarten has to be expanded beyond homosexual sex. For them, life begins in a test tube. And changing genders because the God of Creation used His inelible power and put them in the wrong body is not the government's fault. However, it is fixed in it by changing the language of opposite sex so they cannot be what they are because others want to be what they are not. Breastfeeding is different from chestfeeding because milk comes from a breast, not a chest. Today, there are many methods of birth control that did not exist 49 years ago when Roe v. Wade came to be, like the day-after pill or postponing a menstrual cycle for years. If a young female without parental knowledge is savvy enough to go to a doctor to help her kill the living soul, future of the womb, heritage of Yahgad that is growing inside of her, even if it was the result of a rape from a stranger friend or a relative, she is savvy enough to go to the police and get help that will safeguard the community from a rapist on the loose. Women claiming a right of privacy while using public tax funds to pay for the consequences of their private sexual life because she does not know who the daddy is, where the daddy is, and he wants her to abort so he can just walk away, is evidence of mental, moral, and spiritual family decay that needs exposure and treatment.
Thank you, Ms. Evangel. However, your time has expired. Our next speaker is Joel Gibson.
Hi. Thank you so much for this opportunity and good morning to everybody. And thanks again for the chance to address this body on my lunch break. My name is Joel Thorson. I live up on the north side off of Devon. And I am calling in to ask that the alderman present today act a little more responsible than the Public Safety Committee did last week and vote no on the proposed changes to curfew if it comes up for a vote anytime in the near future. I am frankly appalled with the vote that took place last Friday. To recap, we got to hear from the mayor's team that we desperately need to make curfew earlier and apply it to more people to reduce crime and keep young people safe. And the trouble is, is that when they were asked, like, how that would, like, reduce crime and actually keep people safe, they could not offer any evidence, testimonials, or data to support the idea that it would. And when presented with the fact that Washington, DC had done something similar and gun violence had gone up, again, they had no explanation for why things would be different here. I think it's completely irresponsible to legislate by gut feeling instead of the facts on the ground. And I also don't think I have to tell all of you that the same police department that is going to spend time enforcing these changes instead of, you know, actual police work, are also under a yet-to-be-completed consent decree that was triggered when they murdered a 17-year-old. I want everyone to sit with that for a moment. Chair Chris Taliyafaro, Vice Chair Harry Osterman, and their right-wing friends have passed along a proposal that will waste everyone's time at best and push young people into potentially violent interactions with the Chicago Police Department at worst. And they just expect you and everyone watching to just not bother to question it. I am asking every member here to vote no on this half-baked Bush League proposal. Young Chicagoans deserve so much more from all of you and it is your responsibility to give it to them? I'm going to directly quote Alderman Nick Spazato. He said in his meeting last Friday that if you save one person's life, you have done your jobs. I challenge all of you to use your power and your common sense and apply that mindset to something that can actually make young people's lives better. If you are looking for suggestions, a good place to start would be also opposing the budget cuts to CPS that have been proposed by the mayor. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson, for your comments. There are no further speakers who have timely signed up for the public comment period. Thank you, Mr. Gibson, for your comment. There are no further speakers who have timely signed up for the public comment period.
This concludes the public comment period. Next up, ladies and gentlemen, are resolutions. And we have two resolutions today. A congratulatory resolution for Morton Shapiro upon the occasion of his retirement as president of Northwestern and a resolution recognizing Armed Forces Day and honoring those currently serving in the military. Chairman Harris.
Will you move for the temporary suspension of the rules for the immediate consideration?
Can we move the temporary suspension of the rules for immediate consideration for the resolutions this morning?
There is no objection. So ordered. I will not read the entirety of the resolution, but I will say that President Shapiro began his term in September of 2009 and has served as a professor of economics at Northwestern Judd A. and Marjorie Weinberg College of Arts and Sciences and holds appointments in the Kellogg School of Management and the School of Education and Social Policy. He's also a fellow in the Institute for Research. President Shapiro has let unprecedented growth of the Northwestern research enterprise increasing sponsored activity, research activity from $476.9 million in 2009 to $893 million in 2021. That's an impressive increase and obviously has substantially expanded the university's ability to conduct world-class research. During President Shapiro's tenure, Northwestern invested $2 billion to renovate, open new facilities. Gentlemen, please show some courtesy. Keep your voices low. We are conducting city council business. During President Shapiro's tenure, Northwestern invested $2 billion to renovate and open new facilities in Evanston and Chicago, including the Lewis A. Simpson and Kimberly K. Query Biomedical Research Center, a $475 million state-of-the-art facility in the Streeterville neighborhood of Chicago, helping drive life sciences economy in Chicago. President Shapiro, I just want to say personally, it's been a pleasure to get to know you. It's been a pleasure for the vision that you've had for the future of Northwestern and particularly strengthening its commitment to the city of Chicago and all of the Northwestern campuses and institutes that flourish here in our community. Are there any other members of the body that wish to speak to this resolution? The chair recognizes Alderman Riley.
President, and thank you for allowing me to co-sponsor this resolution with you. I just wanted to say a few words because I've had the pleasure of working with President Shapiro for some time now, all but two of the years I've served as Alderman. And certainly in his role as president of the university, he's done incredible things for the institution itself. But in a separate role as president of the university, he's been an incredible community partner in the Streeterville neighborhood. And I think it's telling that the heads of the Neighborhood Association in Streeterville are as sad to see you go as I am. And not all big institutions have that kind of positive working relationship that Northwestern enjoys in Streeterville. And I give you and your team all the credit for that. So thanks for always being open and honest with me and helping us to identify solutions when we run into issues. And certainly, a relatively controversial project in Streeterville that was initially met with a lot of fear and criticism has been embraced. And it's an incredible investment and really a gift from the university to the city. So I just wanted to thank you and wish you well. And again, it's been a tremendous pleasure and honor working with you. Congratulations. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Riley. The chair recognizes Alderman Spazato.
Thank you, Madam President. I too support this resolution. Mr. President, congratulations. Thank you for all you did. Back in the 70s, I never had the opportunity to attend Northwestern. I was a little too smart for college back in the day, so I just bypassed it in life. But thanks for all you did and congratulations on a great career. So thank you, sir. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Spazato. The chair recognizes Alderman Hopkins.
Madam President, I too rise in support. Morty, you've done an outstanding job. You know, words would fail to capture what you've meant to that institution. Your actions, in fact, are really the testament to you. Compare the state of Northwestern University when you took the helm to where it is today. And that is largely due to your leadership of that institution. And I echo my colleague Alderman Riley's comments. It's really remarkable, the good relations that you enjoy with my neighborhood, Streeterville. It wasn't always the case. You know, there was a tension there that existed for many years. Not only did you resolve that, but you set the bar very high for all of your predecessors going forward to have that kind of relationship with the surrounding community that's beneficial and mutually respectful. And that will be one of the big parts of your legacy that I make sure, as long as I'm Alderman of Streeterville, we preserve. Thank you, Morty. Outstanding job.
Thank you, Alderman Hopkins. Any other members of the body that wish to speak to this resolution? And just in closing, President Shapiro, we've had the opportunity to spend a lot of time together. I've gotten to know you and your lovely wife and your family. I can say that for me personally, this is a bittersweet moment. I think it's important for you to know when it's time for you to move on to the next chapter. You will be greatly missed here in the city of Chicago. But importantly, your legacy will live on for generations and be to the benefit of the Northwestern community for years and years to come. I just want to say thank you on behalf of a grateful city for your partnership, for your guidance and counsel to me personally. You will be very much missed. Thank you. All right, next up, ladies and gentlemen, is a resolution recognizing Armed Forces Day and honoring those currently in the military. I believe that we have some guests that are coming. Yes. Ladies and gentlemen, in the box representative of this particular resolution are Dr. Terrell Odom, Chair of the Mayor's Council on Veterans Affairs, Walida Bennett, who's a member of the advisory committee, Dr. Jerry Field, also a member, and Deanna Love, Director of the Cook County Office of Veterans Affairs. Are there any members of the body that wish to speak at this resolution? The chair recognizes Alderman Viegas.
Thank you, Madam President, for bringing this resolution forward. Millions of Americans raise their right hand to defend this democracy. And they take an oath to defend this country against all enemies, foreign and domestic. And I can tell you that that oath doesn't have an expiration date. During the holidays, when we're remembering our veterans that are protecting this great democracy, it's important to remember also the families that sacrifice for this great country as well. We need to remember veterans, not just on Armed Services Day, Veterans Day, Memorial Day. We need to remember them 365 days a year. They sign up to defend this country, up to and including their life, to protect this democracy. What we saw on January 6th with an attempted insurrection, and we saw veterans that were misguided in not remembering that oath. The veterans that served this country are heroes. And they protect this democracy on a daily basis. And I appreciate this resolution. It's only fitting that a few days before Memorial Day that we also remember those folks that have given up their life for this great democracy. And it reminds us that freedom isn't free. So, Madam President, thank you for introducing this resolution. We have to remember veterans 365 days a year. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Chair Viegas. The chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Thank you, Madam President. I stand up in support of this resolution, always being reminded that especially as we look at what's happening in Ukraine and throughout other areas of this world, that freedom isn't free. From the time that I was a child, my father, who was a Vietnam vet, beat into my head, always, always remember the veterans, always respect veterans, always show them appreciation. And that's why when I became Alderman, one of the things I, first thing I did as we got a veterans home in the 17th ward, Leo's Veterans Home, which is well represented. But sometimes they feel like they're not appreciated. And I asked them, what do you want? They said, well, we want to have a parade on the south side. So over seven years ago, we started the South Side Memorial Day Parade, which has been successful, which we will be having on Memorial Day. But it's to recognize and remember those veterans who have lost those lives but show the ones that are still here some appreciation. And so as we do that today, I thank you all, first of all, for your service, making sure that you're sitting on those committees and those boards so that we will not forget in our everyday lives, in our everyday business, that we must remember the veterans, making sure that they are getting contracts, making sure that they are getting opportunities for jobs. And so those are the things that I just want to make sure I continue to push as an Alderman here. But also making sure that we remember them, the ones that died, the ones that lost their lives. And so at this point, I appreciate you bringing this forward, Madam President, because we cannot forget, because although some, all gave some, we know that some gave all. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Alderman Moore. The chair recognizes Alderman Capelman.
Thank you, Madam President. I too stand and support this resolution. Both my parents served in the armed forces. They were in the Army. And I remember my dad later telling us, all of us, that if we were to go to college, that if it was a state-supported college, we were obligated to give back to the community because that college received funds to do that, so we have to give back. And that's the nature of people who serve in the armed forces. I know Dr. Jerry Fields. I've known him for many, many years. Actually, I met up with him again at Temple Chalons. He's where he is a member. Dr. Fields, it's in his DNA to keep giving back, keep giving back, keep giving back. And we need more people like him and others because that's what's going to help us through the many crises that we're experiencing. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Capelman. The chair recognizes Alderman Spazato.
Thank you, Madam President. I too support the resolution to our guests in the box and to my colleagues that served in the armed services. I have one regret in my life, and that's that I never had the opportunity to serve. So I served in a different way as an Alderman and as a fireman, but it's nothing like getting out there and defending your country. So I just want to thank everybody for all they have done. Unfortunately, I didn't get a chance to sign on to this resolution. So I just want to let everybody know I do support our veterans, our armed forces. And it's just like Alderman Capelman said, or I'm sorry, Alderman Moore said, you know, some gave all. So I had my father served, my two grandfathers served in the big one, and I lost a great uncle in the big one. So with that, just thank you to everybody who's listening, whether you're in the box, in the council, or just people listening to this meeting. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Spazato. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Metz.
Thank you, Madam President. I too stand in supporting this resolution and thank the family members of veterans who've served, the impact that they had to endure once the loved one came home. I looked at a story, I think it was early this year, where all the women who were going to Washington DC who had served and just the looks on their face. And at that time, I really didn't realize that as many women were served in the Army or in the Navy or either one of the careers that was there. But it was just amazing how the smile on their face, that they were being honored. And for me, I want to do more for veterans. I want to be able to build veterans' homes. I think that there's a forgotten about our veterans, some of them who are not able to walk upstairs or have limitation to things that they need to do just to survive. We need to be better supportive of their initiative and just trying to live every day. If they've given their life for us, there's a lot more that we need to do for them. In fact, I would say that we may owe our life to all of those who've given their life. So while we're here, Madam Mayor, I'm looking to do more to help our veterans, particularly in our 37th ward where there's no veterans' home. It's on my radar. I want to help our veterans, and I'm working with many veterans there to help to do that because there's a great need. When you look and see there's no place for them to stay, I think we're doing an injustice and saying we love them, but we're not showing it. So let's show the love. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Metz. Any other members of the body wish to speak to this resolution on Armed Forces Day? Yes, Alderman Hopkins.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I rise in support and I thank our colleague Alderman Viegas for bringing it forward. And a special shout-out to our former colleague Alderman Jim Balser, who many of you served with and was a fierce advocate for veterans and for military service in this body for many years. And I know what he would say if he were here. He would acknowledge the values of integrity, self-discipline, respect, and honor that are instilled in all of our branches of military service. They're not just military values, they're society values. And the young men and women who serve our country in the branches of the armed forces leave their service eventually and bring those values to them. We're going to talk a little bit more today about how some of those young men and women can take those values and bring them to be recruited as Chicago police officers. But for now, I agree with my colleague Alderman Metz. We all should commit to providing the necessary services for veterans as they complete their life's journey, no matter how old they are, whether it was Vietnam, Korea, or even still some remaining World War II veterans that are still among us. We can never turn our backs on them. We continue to honor them. We continue to serve them. And for the young ones, we can offer them some opportunities here in Chicago. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Hopkins. The chair recognizes Alderman Urban.
Thank you, Madam President. And I too rise to support this resolution. We do not, those of us who have not served in the military or don't really have any close relatives that have served in the military, truly don't know and understand the sacrifices that members of the military make. And I personally had to experience this in college when my roommate, when I was at SIU, had some challenges coming home after the Persian Gulf War. And to see some of the issues that he faced and all in the name of providing that blanket of security that you and I so we love to have but don't really understand the sacrifice that others make for us to have such. So I really appreciate the work of our armed forces and as others have stated about providing the opportunities when they return home, be it through housing, be it through procurement, be it through whatever mechanisms we can make to make their lives better and successful. Because we really don't know. Because we really don't know what it's like to be involved in an armed conflict. We see it on television, but we really aren't there in it. And, and that, that stuff has an impact on folks, and we have to pay that bill for those individuals who have provided the security in which we sleep under every night. So, thank you, Alderman DeViegas, for bringing this forward. And also, thank you for your service. And to all the members of the council who have served honorably in our, our Armed Branches of Service. We really appreciate you. We don't say it enough, but we do appreciate everything that you all have done to make our lives a little better. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Irvin. Any other members of the body that wish to speak to this particular resolution? I think the words that have been said by all the members who have spoken are absolutely apt. Most of us have somebody that we know, whether in our family or a close personal friend, that have made that sacrifice, that have joined our volunteer army or during the Vietnam War were drafted. The sacrifices that are made by the individuals, but also the consequences for their families are profound. And there's no possibility that words alone can capture the incredible sacrifice that these individuals make to make sure that our freedom is secure. And that comes home, I think, now more than ever as we see war starting to envelop not only the Ukraine, but threatened other parts of Europe. So, we must make sure that we are supporting our men and women in uniform every single day. Alderman DeViegas is right, this isn't just a particular holiday. The veterans who come home need to be welcomed home with open arms and be supported for the sacrifice that they have made. Because the trauma that many of them experience in theaters of war is real, that is profound. And we've got to do more to make sure that we step up and we support our men and women in uniform. Because their sacrifice is a sacrifice for our safety, for our peace of mind, so we can sleep well at night and we can continue our democratic values that we treasure, but unfortunately, from time to time, take for granted here in the greatest democracy that the world has ever known. So, I appreciate the members of the body. I was happy to support this resolution. And thank you all very much for the work that you're doing every day to make sure that veterans in Chicago's needs are met and that we continue to push them forward every single day. Thank you very much. Now, ladies and gentlemen, before we return to the regular order of business, I think there's one other matter that members would like to speak to. The Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Madam President. Today is somewhat bittersweet as we say goodbye to our Alderman. It's tough, man. I remember when you came to my office and said that, "I think that I can do this." And I asked you, I said, "Man, are you sure that you really want to do this?" You said, "Man, I'm, I've been into a fondue all my life, and I want to make a positive change." Your father been with us since day one. And my predecessor sat down and said, "Hey, there's nobody more in love with North Lawndale than Michael Scott." And from that day, you and I have had a bond that has been unbreakable. Our families been together. My wife ran the first campaign, and we've been lockstep on the West Side. Even though I know you're actually coming to the war, which is funny, at CineSpace, and to do something, I know that's in your heart, to help and, and deal with the entertainment scene in the city, to help bring more folks from the South and West Side to those jobs, is a great thing. And the work that you've done in your seven years here, the, what we won't see it today, but we'll see it in the next couple of years. Nobody ever thought that Mount Henry would ever get moved off of Roosevelt and, and Costner. It's gone. And now, we'll see some new development over there. The work along Ogden. You've done a great job. I know you'll do greater down the road. Just don't forget about us, and God bless you, brother.
Thank you, Alderman Irvin. The Chair recognizes Alderman Osterman.
Thank you, Madam President. I first, I don't know that I've ever seen Alderman Irvin get choked up on this floor, which is, I think, a testament to Michael Scott and the impact in a short time he's made on all of us, by the way he conducts himself here. For our city to move forward, leaders have to work together and listen to each other, and listen first and talk last, and find ways for common ground to move the city forward. Every day, I serve with Michael Scott. He brought that. I represent a North Side Ward that has issues like every ward, but knowing what Michael has gone through in his community and the work he's had to do to move issues forward that have stood still since Martin Luther King was killed. And to see the progress that he has made in a short time is unbelievable. And all of us have a stake in North Lawndale. And all of us should appreciate the hard work that Michael has done to move his community forward. I joke that I sit on the zoning committee, I chair the housing committee. And for a long time, most of the stuff in the, in the zoning committee was from the 27th Ward. And Walter will tell you about the cranes. But I will tell you that in the recent years, Alderman Scott, Emma Metz, Jason Irvin, they've been giving Walter a run-for-his-money on the projects and the, and the positive investments in their communities. And that does not happen overnight. That does not happen with one phone call. That happens with grounded work that takes time, where trust is established with residents about what they want for their community and not what should happen to their community. And Michael has led that and forged that. Today's a really hard day to be here with all of us, given what happened last night in Texas, given to what may happen this weekend in Chicago. But I'm happy for Michael Scott today. I'm happy for Michael Scott's family. I'm happy for the future that he's got. I'm happy he's not leaving Chicago. I'm happy he's going to be a stone's throw away from the work that he's been doing in his community to serve his community in the city in a different capacity. And we're lucky he's going to be there. He's probably the only one who could, you see those shows that CineSpace puts together. I've not seen a lot of cops that look like that. Michael looks like one of those cops that fits into the skinny jeans because he's a, he's in a, he's in a good place. But it's been a privilege for me to serve with you, Mike. Little fact, my mother followed Michael's dad as a head of special events. And in city government, the closer you get to Hollywood is being the director of special events or D case. And to know Michael's dad, good-looking man, he was Hollywood, right? Michael Scott's going to be Hollywood on the West Side. And we're happy for you. I'm also going to say this, you know, you chaired the education committee. Sophia King, as your vice chair, as the new potential chair of the, the committee, would do a phenomenal job. So, lastly, I'll just say is, again, I'm really happy for you. I'm happy for what you've done. I wish you all the best in what you do. And whoever succeeds you, let them know that there's 49 people that have a vested interest in the amazing work that you've started. God bless.
Thank you, Alderman Osterman. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Metz.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Mike, we're going to miss you coming to the meetings, being that voice on the West Side. And I want to make sure that we continue to be able to move in the right direction. When you don't hear people's complaining negative, never heard it out of 24. If it's anything, you was on them about getting something done. I have relatives in 24, and nothing but good things are being said. But they didn't have to tell me that because I know the work that you do day in and day out. The one thing that I didn't know how you were able to do it with little children, that was hard, given the fact that this job is so demanding. But you gave it your all. And I'm glad to see you be able to spend time with them in a way that you're not gone all the time or interrupted with the phone calls or at a meeting. Our kids are the most precious thing that we can have. And if we don't give them the time now, you're going to pay for it later. And I don't want you to have to pay. So, I want to commend you and congratulate you. But we're looking to have someone in that seat that's going to take that 24th Ward and take it into the next century as it is deserving to go. So, thank you so much for your service and look forward to continuing to work with you. You're not going anywhere, Sarah. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Metz. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Harris.
Thank you, Madam President. To my little brother, I couldn't be prouder of you. I want the best for you. And you are the best of the 24th Ward. As I look at you and I remember your father's legacy and the big shoes that I felt you were stepping into the field, you have filled your own shoes. So, and created your own legacy. All right? So, now, baby brother, somebody got to come behind you and keep it moving. But I couldn't be prouder of you because you've done, what you wanted to do was to transform your community and make it a better place for the residents that live there and the people that are going to come behind you and be able to say, "Look what Mike Scott did." So, today, I ain't saying goodbye because this ain't a funeral. So, I want to get that straight. But I want to say that you've earned your flowers because you've worked hard, and you could only get there by working hard. So, I am saying God bless you on the new journey of your life. You still got all of us here that love you and care about you to help you do and be wherever you want to be. But God bless you. God bless your wife and the kids because your children need you. God bless you.
Thank you, Alderman Harris. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Austin.
Don't know my own name. I don't think I was asleep. Thank you, Madam President. I too rise to be associated with this resolution. I wish I'd have wrote it myself because it would have had so much of comedy in it. Because I can say that, Michael, all the time that I have been in this council, you have really made my heart laugh because you made it a pleasure to come here and work because we saw you working so hard to bring your community to life. And you've done just that, as Alderman Harris said, that you filled your own shoes. You didn't have to worry about filling your dad's shoes. You filled yours, and that's to say something. I wanted to say that the time that you've been here, I try to always bring up those that have gone past. And I, I tried to set up a luncheon with my mentor, Alderman Wilson Frost. And when I opened that door for some of the young, all the men that are in this council, you were the first to say, "Yes, I'll attend." I'm grateful that you did because what I didn't know, that he has forgotten. I tell you, because he was a wealth of knowledge. And I wanted him to impart that to you. So, as the, the mother of the council, I want to say to you, "A job well done, son. You can do better than what you have done. The next venue that you be into, your endeavor, you'll be even bigger and better. Know that there is someone watching over you. His name is Jesus. So, you will be the big Michael Scott, not just Michael Scott Jr." Thank you, Michael. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Austin. The Chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
I too want to be recognized and be associated with this resolution. I did not think that I would actually be sad today. I talk to Mike pretty much every day. Seven years ago, I not only gained a colleague, but I gained a friend and a younger brother. Growing up with no brothers, you know, it was, it was a pleasure to, for Mike to come in and fill that role as, as Mikey. I'm so proud of him. You know, we came in at the same time. We, and, and we, we experienced the same issues. We, we endeavored to accomplish the same goals. And to see the things that Mike has done in that period of time makes me not only proud, but it continues to inspire me to continue to work hard for, for my, for my ward, which, which has its challenges. Again, I did not think I would be sad today. I thought I was just going to come in, go through this council, take them out to lunch. I'm still going to do that, though, Mike. Still going to hang out. But I want to say, tell you, man, I'm extremely, extreme. You stop. I'm extremely, extremely proud of you, man. I look, I look forward to continuing our friendship. On a more personal note, you know, when I talk to Mike, I, I also see this huge family man. Every time I talk to him, he's off to soccer. He's off to grabbing CP3, little, little, C3.0. And one day, I joked, I said, "Mike, man, you, uh, you running for Father of the Year every year." And, and, and if they did have such a, such an award, you absolutely would get it. So, Mike wants, again, I'm proud of you, man. Whoever comes behind you in the 24th Ward has some, has some small, big shoes to fill. But you, you, you always have a friend in the 7th Ward. You know that. And you always have a big brother and love you, man. And, and I hate you for making me feel sad today. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Alderman Mitchell. The Chair recognizes Alderman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam President. Everyone's calling you little bro, uh, big, little brother, big brother. We have the Lawndale connection, and we have many similarities. Some of you might know that Mike and I both went to Whitney Young together. He was the star running back, very fleet of foot those days. I don't know how it is nowadays, Mike. But I'm sure, I'm sure you can still get on the field. But also, we were gym rats. Worked at, at the park together. You at Douglas, me at Pachowski. They're on the southwest side of Chicago. But the thing that might connect us the most and will continue to connect us is our work in North and South Lawndale, in Little Village, in the Greater Lawndale community. And always highlighted in my mind in our work several years ago, last summer, where we walked the streets together, where at one point, we had some tough times between our communities, but we came together and we brought people together. And with the flip of the switch, through some of your leadership, through our work together, we would, uh... we would really stop what was plaguing our community and the violence that we saw between our communities. And you know, it's going to continue to be a challenge, but I think having you still in Longdale will be very important for our work together. We've shown how to do the work. We will continue to do the work together. I know that's a fact, because we have a lot of mutual interest moving forward when it comes to good community-centric development, getting people jobs in our community. We have a very important relationship between our two communities, and I'm so excited to have that base of partnership. We've worked together, we've played together, we've studied together, and we will continue to work together into the future. Good luck, Mike. But, you know, we'll be seeing each other tomorrow. So congratulations on all your work here at the city council.
Thank you, Alderman Rodriguez. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Smith.
Thank you very much. Alderman Scott, I have watched your career as you've been alderman and have been so impressed at just how hard you have worked these past seven years. You have empowered your residents. I think about the proposal to change the name of Douglas Park to Douglas Park, and thought it was the most beautiful example of turning the shameful history of our state and our country to get rid of the name of Stephen Douglas, who was a traitor to our country, to Frederick Douglass, who spoke for freedom in our country. And saw how you listened to your residents and fought for them, and how you have reversed the tide of, the path that Longdale has been down for so long in your work and in drawing attention to the needs of your community. The ability to finally build a set of new, single-family homes for families and bring back families to your community has got to be one of the crowning achievements of any alderman in this city. And I respect you so, and I regret that we won't be able to continue to work together on the issues of juvenile justice that so many of us have been talking about and trying to continue to try to do the work to bring young people back to safety and away from being involved in the justice system. But all the best to you, Michael. I respect you, and can't wait to see what you do next. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Smith. The chair recognizes Alderman Cardona, sorry, Cardenas.
Thank you, Madam President. I join in all the accolades. All I can say about Mike is the friendliest guy in the city council, the best guy to get along with. If you can't get along with Mike, something's wrong with you. So I congratulate you.[796.23][796.23](LAUGHTER). So here's a guy that you can always, always smiling, talk, I mean, you find him in the hallway, and he's always smiling, "What's going on?" If you ask him for something, he'll say, "You got it. Like, I haven't even told you yet." Goes, "I know, but I got to run, and you talk too much, so I got to go." But thank you. Thank you for being a friend, and this is the best thing, best decision you ever made. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Cardenas. The chair recognizes Alderman Burnett.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I also like the rise in support of this resolution. You know, Mike, I call you a pace setter. Call you a pace setter because you're very steady, but you keep the speed going. You set a pace over in Longdale. You broke through all of the shade that was in Longdale, and those of us who know the West Side, we know about all the shade. You just kept moving forward. You gave a lot of people in that community a lot of vision, a lot of hope. You gave them an opportunity to see the community for what it could be instead of what it was. You know, a lot of developers, I talked to a lot of developers, and I would always, they would ask me, "So what's the next area?" I'm like, "The next area is Longdale. You need to go to Longdale because that's what's happening, and that's where things are getting ready to happen. It may not look like it now, but watch, in the future, it's the next frontier." Because they got a great young alderman over there who's working hard, and he's very accessible. And a lot of folks don't understand, in order to be able to have all these developments and things going on, you have to be accessible, you have to do a lot of extra work, you have to be in a lot of meetings, it takes a lot of sacrifice. I commend you on your sacrifice, but also commend you on your balance, trying to take care of your family first. I know how important it is for your kids. I don't know how many times I done saw your son on the Zoom meetings, when we had Zoom meetings, and, you know, and how you would say, "Sit down, stop that, leave that alone," how you were so involved with your kids, man. And I admire you for, you know, taking care of your family first. I know your dad would be so proud, and your mom, they both were civil servants, and they loved Longdale. Your dad loved Longdale. Even though he wasn't a developer, he was developing Longdale, right? He was building stuff on the West Side before anybody else had anything built on the West Side. Your dad was involved. And you followed his footsteps, you got the heart. So I just commend and I admire you for taking that big step. You know, it takes a lot to give up power, man. You know, it's not an easy thing. You know, you have people ratting on your back, you know, ratting on your shoulders. It takes a lot. But I commend you, Mike, on what you're doing. I commend you for what you have done. I appreciate the fact you make me feel young every time I talk to you, especially when we compete on the Peloton, even though I can't do nine miles and a half hour like you, but you pushed me. I'm up to eight miles because of you. If it wasn't for you, I wouldn't be at eight miles. And I'm going to tell you, it's hard, man. But I appreciate you pushing me, man. And I appreciate you always being humble, classy, respectful, you know, to everyone. You know, and you are never big enough to not ask people for their advice, but also, you know, you're not one who wouldn't let people know your opinion of how you felt about something. So I just want to say good luck to you. God bless you. I know you're going to be at Center Space. I know you're going to have a lot more time for your children and your family. But I also want you to keep in mind, you know, even though I'm short, I look big, I look big on TV, man. If you get me in one of those shows, I look tall, because a lot of those actors look tall. They short, they look tall on TV. So keep me in mind, man, okay? Good luck to you.[1064.33][1064.33](LAUGHTER).
I don't even know what to say in response to that. Just making a package deal between me and Walter, right? The chair recognizes Alderman Kappelman.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support of this. There are 14 wards in the city of Chicago that have a murder rate 10 times higher than what's found in my ward, the 46th Ward. Michael Scott has one of those wards. And as an alderman, I'm oftentimes pushed to advocate for the residents of my ward. And I do that, but I do it in a manner where I have to also advocate for the entire city. I need the perspective of the entire city. Michael Scott helps me with that. I need his perspective to be a better alderman. I remember last city council, I congratulated him for some affordable housing that is happening in his ward. And we talked about vacant city lots in our wards. And he told me there were over 3,000 vacant city lots in his ward. My ward has zero. That's a serious thing that we have to grapple with. And that's why it's so important that we have people like Michael Scott who can bounce things off of us so that we can see the perspective of the entire city, because we need to see it. When I describe people who I admire, the first thing that comes out of my mouth is, "That person has a good heart." And that's Michael Scott. He has a good heart, and we all know that. A while back, and I think some others have touched on it, there was a Zoom meeting where I saw Michael Scott's son interacting with him, and that was a powerful moment for a lot of us who needed that type of a parent. I loved seeing that. And so I also love the fact that now you can give back more of your time to your children and to your wife. They deserve to have you. We've had you, I'm not going to say long enough, I wish we had you more, but I understand. So thank you so much. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Kappelman. The chair recognizes Alderman Vasquez.
Thank you, Madam President. I also rise in support. Michael, I regret that we haven't had the time to interact as often as I'd like, but the times that we have have really impressed a lot on me. I think the two I remember clearly are after the murder of George Floyd, when the civil unrest tore apart our city. And you and I were able to partner and get some 40th Ward neighbors out there to Longdale to help clean up. And watching the ground swell and the amount of people who came together, block after block on every single street to clean up, touched me, but what touched me more was there was a moment in a parking lot where we all took the time to just get on our knees and come together as a community. And what you have done, or what you did in that moment and have done in your role, has brought hope to people that need it and inspired communities. And that is a gift that not a lot of people get to do, but that you do well. I also remember being in your office and seeing a picture of your father holding you as a kid, right? And I often have these things where I think about legacy and like family and what it means to raise a child, and to think about someone who served this city so well, and then to have his son also do the same, right, after working at Park District. The commitment to the city shows how much you love the city like we all love the city. But we don't often get the chance to show it and do the work that you have. When we've had first coming into council and seeing, you know, some of our lefties come in and trying to see if we could change some stuff, as we often do, being able to talk to you and have the conversations about, through your experience of like how you can effectively move things through, how you have negotiation and conversation with people you don't agree with, shows a level of wisdom beyond your years that was very helpful to me starting out. I think it allowed me to really look at how we argue cases, how we bring people along and build coalition. And so it's, again, I have regrets that we didn't have more time, but I know we will have more time. And I also want to commend you for bringing arts and entertainment to your ward and doing events to a level that us rookies can't even figure out yet. So it is very fitting that you'll be at Center Space to continue bringing opportunity, bringing entertainment to our city. And so I thank you, the city of Chicago thanks you for your service, and I look forward to the opportunities to build a better relationship. And thank you for how you came in. Thank you for how you're going out. We don't often get that enough, so I tip my hat to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Vasquez. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Taylor.
So I'm in the bad seat, because if I put this down, you're not going to be able to hear me talk, and I honestly can't see you. There you go. Hey, I received a text. Thank you. See? I received a text yesterday that said, "What did you do?" And right under the text was, "Michael Scott is leaving." And I'm like, "Was I that bad of a coworker that you wanted to leave?" I have the utmost respect for you, and I appreciate and thank you for your service. Thank you for being honest. Thank you for being transparent. We didn't always agree, but I always thought that when I had an issue, that you went above and out of your way to make sure that my needs got met when it came to CPS. And so I am forever grateful. I never told you the story, and I'm almost scared to share it now, but I'm going to share it, and don't you start crying, so I won't start crying. So two weeks before your father passed, I met him. He came down to Coco. We had this conversation, and he was just charming. And once I met you, I knew exactly where it came from. You are your father's child, and while I didn't always agree with what he said either, I respected his honesty and his transparency. Thank you for your service. I hope that we can still call you. I hope that we can still bug you, and you are one of those coworkers who always went up and above to help the rookies out, and I thank you. And so you've always been Team Taylor, and so I appreciate that. And he's the person who gave me the name Firecracker. So literally, when they put out that you were retiring, I'm like, "Dang, what did I do?" Thank you, brother, for your service, and I look forward to working with you with whatever you do. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Alderwoman Taylor. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Hairston.
It's the knee.
Is there something about the front row?
There's something about the front row. I think they sprayed something in here. To my baby brother. I think I'm going to turn this way, because I'm not going to look at you. Right? I'm not going to cry. I have the privilege and honor of serving with your father, and I remember at some of the events we were at, and you were there, and I would say, "He's going to be something. He's got it going on." And one of the things about you is that you're a gentleman, right? And you're a man, and you're a strong black man, and you don't have to be boisterous, you don't have to be buff and bold. You are just yourself. And that reminds me of how your father operated, very smooth, smooth operator, but got things done. And in this game, people don't understand. You ask somebody, they say, "You said, 'Oh, I was, you know, in a meeting for 10 hours, and then I had to do a block club this and a something. I didn't work 18 hours.'" And they say, "That's what you signed up for." Now, I don't know anybody in their right mind that would sign up for working at least 18 hours a day, seven days a week. So all of us in here need to, you know, really check our state of our mind, because we all do it. And it is a labor of love, and it is a passion. But what's more important, and what we all know, is family. And it is very important, and I think that's the strongest message that you could send to the people in your neighborhood, "I love you, but I love family more." And so what you are doing is stepping out on faith and showing by example that I have to stand up for mine and take care of mine. And I admire you that, admire you for that. You know, COVID moved you away from me, and I used to feed the bear behind me. And so I think my pockets will be a little bit lighter, because I won't be on the gummy shopping spree. You will also not receive the taco gummies, the hamburger gummies, the pizza gummies, or any of the other gummies that I provided. But I might be able to find some if you can remember me when you get over to Center Space. Congratulations, Mike.[1694.51][1694.51](LAUGHTER).
Thank you, Alderman Hairston. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Dow.
Thank you, Madam President. I too stand to be associated with this resolution. And Mike, I'm going to miss you. When I think of you and I, I see us as sort of mirrors of each other, because we represent a similar type of ward, a ward that is close to downtown, great housing stock, you know, near some amenities like parks, but is marginalized. And I was on the Meenir Muhammad Show maybe about two weeks, two months ago, and one of the questions that came up was, you know, they were talking about Bronzeville and all that. But I was asked, you know, "Who else in the council is doing great work, right?" The first name that came to mind was you. And I admire you because you have done the heavy lifting in North Longdale. You know, when I think of our communities, our wards, we have a legacy of poverty, and I think back to the Tribune series where, you know, North Longdale was called a millstone, and how difficult it is to move the needle on a community that has been marginalized, that has been ignored. And I think the work that you have done over the last seven years, to come in and actually roll up your sleeves, you changed the narrative on North Longdale. You've made some improvements in North Longdale, and for that, you should be, you should get all the accolades. all the accolades. And so, I just wanted to say that you've been a strong advocate for your community, and you've set the foundation for the next person who becomes Alderman in the 24th Ward to actually take it to another level, because you have moved the needle. And so, I wish you the best on your future, your family, and I will miss you in this body. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Dow. The Chair recognizes Alderman Spizato.
Thank you, Madam President. Mike, what can I say? Seven years was a true ple-- all right, hold on, this ain't working. Can you guys, I can't say. All right, thank you, Mike. All right. Seven years was a true pleasure. Somehow, some way, you found a way to make friends with 49 people in this body. So, there's that many of us that could say that. That not only did you make friends, you're well-respected. So, I'm not going to wish you luck, because you didn't get where you are today with luck, right? That's with hard work and dedication. I'm going to tell you best wishes, like I tell everybody. Best wishes to you and your future endeavors. I feel that we forged a friendship and we'll be friends forever. If I'm around or you're around, I'm sure I could pick up the phone and call you anytime. I'm sure likewise you could call me anytime. But, I just want to say it was a true honor and a pleasure to work with you, and I wish you the best of everything. And some people on the outside don't understand what goes on with this job. This is an intense job. You hear that media people over there? This is an intense job, okay? Like my friend said, 14 hours a day, maybe not 14, but certainly 12 hours a day, seven days a week. So, this is an intense job. And I don't know how you, you, me and my colleagues that have young families, I don't know how you do this, but, you know, enjoy the time with your family. It's precious time. You'll never be able to get that back, so God bless you, God bless your family. Thank you for everything, Michael. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Spizato. The Chair recognizes Alderman Talia Faro.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support of this resolution and join my colleagues in honoring Chairman Michael Scott. Mike, I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart and let you know that I respect you like no other. I want to say thank you for beginning, well, it's an honor rather, to begin this journey with you in 2015. A lot of people are going to say, or measure your success by what you did on the West Side, and you did some great things on the West Side, and you did some great things in your ward. But, that's not going to be the true measure of your success. That measure will come from the accomplishments and the commitment that you have to your family. And so, I join my colleague Alderman Walter Burnett and Leslie Hairston in saying that I'm very proud of that commitment. Someone told me, I want to say about a few months ago, they said, "Chris, that your house is going to depreciate in value, may appreciate a little bit, and your car is going to depreciate." But, one thing that won't depreciate, and that's your family and the love and the commitment that you put into your family. So, that has always been my staple, my foundation, and that's being committed to family. I'm very proud that you're making this move, so that you could spend time with them. Every time I look at my kids as they've gotten older, I could see them do something that reminds me of myself, and I know you're going to do the same. So, I thank you and I respect you so much for that, for putting them first. And thank you for the great work and the commitment that you've had to the residents on the West Side of Chicago. It's been an honor serving with you. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Talia Faro. The Chair recognizes Alderman Sawyer.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise to be associated with the, all the acknowledgements for my beige brother from the West Side, who I love dearly, Michael Scott. I didn't want it to sound like a memorial, because Mike's a young, vibrant young man and going to be doing, continue to do great things in the City of Chicago. A couple of things, really quickly. The work that you've done on the West Side is transformative. People may not realize it until a few years later, after you've moved on, but you've put in the work to make Lawndale an up-and-coming, like Alderman Burnett stated earlier. It's going to be, it's on the move, and it's because of the work that you've put in. Two, you know I have a request, and I'm hoping that we can fulfill that today. We've talked about it for a long time. I have a picture of my father and your father together, and we always said we were going to retake this picture, and I'm hoping today, no, no, it's going to happen today, we are going to retake this picture in memories of our respective dads, who I loved your dad and I love you, my brother. We're going to continue to talk, as always. God bless you and your family, and much success to you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Alderman Sawyer. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman King.
Wow. Don't know what to say after all of that, but I think I can say with authority that you single-handedly brought Light Skin back. Just, just going to put that out there. No, on a serious tip, public service is really hard. It has never been harder than over these last, I'm not going to cry, than over these last couple of years. And it has been especially hard on our families. And we need to work together so that it's not that hard. But, I always say that good people always lead first. They do, because you have options, you've got choices. And my brother, you are one of those good people. I am so sad to see you go. I've seen and watched the way that you roll up your sleeves and work in your community, on behalf of your community. I enjoy your wise counsel, you know, when I call and we have ideas that we're running past each other, very wise beyond your years. I think people lead with different styles. Yours is one of a calm, quiet, quiet calm and class. But, your work speaks volumes, it's really loud. You lead by example, and your work will reverberate way beyond you. And we're all, you know, better for that and for you. And I just appreciate your leadership and your service, and you will be missed. You will be missed. But, I will stay in touch, definitely will stay in touch. Thank you for your service and wish you and your family the best. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman King. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to rise and join the chorus of accolades for one Alderman, Michael Scott, who, I was going to start a Whitney Young Dolphin Caucus, because I don't belong to one yet, and now we're going to be short one other person. I'm the one with the least tenure here, and I wanted to at least share my experience from the short time that I've been here. You were one of the first phone calls that I made when I was contemplating all of this, and you gave it to me straight. You didn't try to talk me out of anything, and you shared with me your philosophy on public service, and that is, above all else, take care of your residents, whatever that is, and to be present for them and to be present enough to have conversations, to move things forward. And I've watched you do that. From day one, you were supportive of whatever choice I was going to make, and you were one of the first people to stand with me when I was announced, and I so appreciated that. It meant the world to me that you did. And then, you offered me your giant Bible, because there's no real onboarding process for all of this. And I couldn't thank you enough for that. So, while I'm here to thank you, I also have like, well, I have a bone to pick too, because now you're going and I won't have you here, but I know that I'm going to, just like everybody else will, still continue to look to you for advice, be a friend, and we will be all watching for great things from you, because there's so much more to come. Congratulations to you and your family for the time that you're going to get back, and I just wish you all of the best there. And I thank you for one last thing, which is, now that you are leaving, I may actually have a little bit of tenure over somebody while I'm here. So, thank you for that. I wish you all the best, and thank you. And I hope to, I hope to have as much of an impact as you've had for the time that you've been here. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lee. The Chair recognizes Alderman Curtis.
Thank you, Madam President. Little Mikey, I had a wonderful time since 2015 with you. You know, we're going to miss you in the council, of course, but I know you're going to end up back on the South Side in the back, on our patio back there soon. Your wife can finally say that, Alderman Curtis, you're my favorite Alderman, without you hitting upside the head with your bookbag. You know, we're going to miss that. The most important thing that I admire you about, you know, no matter where we are, we could be at a meeting, we could be in city council, no matter what's going on, I could see you looking at your watch, and no matter what time that strikes, you're putting that bag on and you're going to get your kids, and that's the most important thing. You know, family first, and nothing else matters. I had, you know, I'm originally a West Sider, guys, I'm really originally a West Sider, and in the late 90s, I had the pleasure of working with your dad, because no election moved in the City of Chicago, because your dad was the big dog in any election that came up. And I had the pleasure of working with him, and it was great. And again, you are the spitting image of him. So, congratulations, and we will see you soon. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Alderman Curtis. The Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President, and good morning, members of the city council. Nope, I got six minutes. I thought for a moment that I'd give you the best parting gift and say nothing. But, I couldn't let it go. But, I do want to say this, because everyone is already saying your accolades, and everyone is, you know, I have to just take umbrage with the fact that they keep calling you little, because you and I are about the same height, so I can't say that right now. But, I do know that we came on together, like a number of us here. I've had the pleasure, we've had the pleasure of having our spouses become friends, Natasha and Hugo, and seeing your kids grow up over these last seven years. You know, it's a wonderful thing, and you've been a wonderful person to work with. And I believe that you were inspiring the best out of all of us. And I'm not going to ask you for any tickets. I don't need to be on camera, because your friend right in front of you says I'm on TV too much, as it is. But, I thank you and just say, I love everything that you represent. You are the truest Chicagoan, example of being a true Chicagoan in this body, and look forward to everything that you're going to do in the future. Look forward to seeing everything with your family moving forward, and just know, as so many of our colleagues have said here today, that we will be here for you however way you need us. So, from the Southwest Side to the West Side and everywhere in between. Godspeed, my friend.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Thank you, Madam President. I definitely stand in support of this resolution. A lot of times, everybody hear me quote Reverend Evans, that's because he was so wise. And what he used to say, Michael, is that, "I'd rather see a testimony than hear one." And you exemplify that. And I start out, as everybody talk about your dad, I first had an opportunity to meet him when I was working at the Chicago Housing Authority as a development manager. And when the mayor took back over Robert Taylor, I asked to go over there, because, to leave aviation, because I came out of Robert Taylor, and I wanted to make sure that residents got a fair shake. And so, I ended up on the West Side of Chicago, working with Ms. Mary Baldwin at Rockwell. And I had to fight for them. And the way I fought, as you know, may not be the way the administration wants me to fight. And so, I met your dad and Mr. Ernest Gates at the same time. And while Gates was trying to check me for challenging the way the mayor and the CEO at CHA did things, because I was always fighting for the residents, it was your dad who stepped in with that calm and said, "Wait, this young man is just fighting for the community." And then, began to show how you can, getting to the point of view, disagree without being disagreeable. And that's the person you are. Yeah, people can call me crazy sometimes, people can say, "David, you do this," sometimes. But, what Michael Scott said, he's fighting for his residents. I've heard that in public, I've heard that in private, and I appreciate you for that. But, one thing I say about politics is I say about people who are saying they want to be a preacher. Two people I keep my eyes on, preachers and people who say they want to be elected official. It's not something you run to, something you run from, because it's a calling on your life, and you've proven that here. Because I was, of the work that you're doing, you're out there serving, and it gets tiring. And you're honest to say that. And me and the CFO and I was just out in the hallway talking, yes, we do say, "God, family, and then community." Uh-uh. And this business is God, the community, and family. Otherwise, you're not doing your job. And that's the reality of it. And so, you have to find that way and have to make that sacrifice, something get sacrificed. And what you've decided to do is say, "Wait, I have to put my family first." And you've served well, and there's people who can, what I say about, when people ask me about Michael Scott, I say, "He's the consummate politician." You're good, that's not a bad thing. You are. You navigate, you do things, may not always go with the policy that I go with, but guess what? When Michael Scott walked away, he got something to point to for his community, and that's the main thing. And you've done that. And so, they can be proud of you for that, whether they agree with you or disagree with you, you have something to point to. And guess what? You've done it with character, you've done it with integrity, but most of all, you've done it with a good heart, Scott, a good heart. And for that, I value our friendship, something that I would treasure, and the fact that we came in together as Aldermen, that would always mean a lot to me as an Alderman sitting in this city council. So, I wish you well. I wish you the good, better times, and as you're moving on with your family, just doing wonderful things and finding that joy, that joy, in doing the work that you're going to do in the future. God bless you, and I appreciate you, bro.
Thank you, Alderman Moore. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Coleman.
About eight years ago, I stepped out on faith, and I traveled out of the country by way of 290 West. And I attended a music festival because of LS over there. And I was so inspired, after making it there safely, you all did make it there safely, I was so inspired by Alderman Scott and the creation of love, of unity, of family, of pride for your community by way of the West Side Music Festival. And I said then, "I'm going to do this in Inglewood one day." I had just lost that election, and I had so much fun seeing Bill DeVoe and seeing these Grammy-nominated folks and like these famous people right there at Douglas Park. And I was inspired by the work that you, under your leadership and Natasha, did, and you held my hand, and you made it cool to serve. You all, the 24th Ward and the 16th Ward are very similar, just a different size of town, because we do have the most vacant lots, we do have all of the challenges when I think about Lawndale and Inglewood, and it's a lot. And I remember you telling me, "Kid, you're either called or crazy." And I think we're And I think we're a little bit of both. I was also afraid to run for office because I didn't want the, being a daughter of parents with this legacy, Rod and Michael, we can testify to, that it's harder to serve following in the footsteps of our parents. And you also showed me what faith and a whole lot of hard work will do when serving communities like ours. I want to thank you for being my big brother, for always showing me better and showing me how to serve our community. Every day when I worked on the other side of town and I would come to his office and Michael actually showed me how to be an Alderman for about two years during my time at Cook County. And I would come and sneak over to your ward nights, sneak over to see what you and Coach were doing, see how you were doing your menu, try to mimic you during call time. I love you so much. This isn't a see you later. I don't want my eyeballs to sweat. This is a, I'm going to annoy you even more because you will not, now I know I can annoy you a little bit more. You got a little bit more time with the babies and with the family and at CineSpace who are so blessed to have your wisdom, your experience from the Park District, from CPS, and in the chambers. I love you so much. You inspire me to work on my 18-year plan. It's an insider. Congratulations. I love you.
Thank you, Alderman Coleman. The chair recognizes Alderman Nugent. Nugent.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support of this resolution and join my colleagues in honoring Alderman Michael Scott. Sometimes the simplest things are the most important things. And I really want to thank you for being a great friend. You have taken my calls whenever, you've been a sounding board. We've been able to hash out issues on phone calls when Michael will put me on hold because he has to call an ambulance for a constituent in need in his community or chat with somebody on the street. Your commitment to your community is illustrated in everything you do, whether it's through the education committee or through your work on juvenile justice. You have a special place, there's a special place in my heart for you. I really admire the way you keep your head down and get the work done. And I just really respect you and I wish you nothing but the best. So good luck, my friend. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Alderman Nugent. The chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
Thank you, Madam President. Little bro. Little bro. One thing I didn't know about you as much as we talked, I'm the Alderman, that you played football. I didn't know that. Reason I didn't know it because I didn't know they had a helmet big enough to put that head in. Now, let me tell you all the behind the scene joke on that one. Last month, Mike spoke and he said something, I told him, I said, boy, I'm gonna get you. I'm gonna get you. And when I found out he was leaving today, I knew this was the last opportunity I was gonna have to get you. Because there's nobody in this council that I laugh with and joke with more than Michael. Whenever I need a laugh, whenever he needs a laugh about whatever the heck is going on, about whatever, you know, whatever the thing is, he would call me, I would call him, and we would crack jokes until tears came out our eyes. And we, our stomachs were hurting from laughing so much. And Mike would always tell me, stop, stop, because my stomach is hurting and I can't take no more. So I appreciate that about you. Because one thing we all know, everybody said you come from great stock. We know that. And you have been a trendsetter. And, you know, when you look at the job that you are doing over there, it's second to none. You hit the ground running and you laid the template for somebody to come behind and follow the template that you have set in place. And so when, you know, I'm gonna tell you, I'm sad to see you go because I know you have more work to do for your community. But one thing that I appreciate about you more than anything, and everybody else has already said it, is your family. Whenever you talk to Mike, he got the kids. He's doing something with the kids. And so when I read yesterday that you were leaving to, you know, do bigger and better things, we all appreciate that and admire that about you. But the second part was, I'm going to spend more time with my family. And I said, how the hell you gonna spend more time with your family? You're already doing it. You know, because you've always put family first. So brother, I love you, I'm proud of you, and I appreciate where you're going. You're going to do bigger and better things, man, but we're always here for you, man. God bless you.
Thank you, Alderman Beal. The chair recognizes Alderman Brookins.
Thank you, Madam President. I frequently say that you never know the words that you say to someone, what a profound effect they could have on that person. You've affirmed my belief in that. I told you, like I tell anybody who endeavors to get into this business of public service, as to one, be careful what you ask for. And then the second thing I tell you is know when to say when. Now, I never knew Mike was listening because I told him, be careful what you ask for, and he kept asking for it. I told him, know when to say when. It's like, yeah, I'll be gone before he gets out of here and I'm jealous right now. But he was listening. I just ask you to remember that as you go through life, when you talk to and mentor young people, you just never know what they are listening to and what a profound effect that you will have on them in their lives. Now for the jokes. I want you to hire Walter. He's about Judge Judy's size. I could be an extra since everybody calls me Walter anyway. So I wish you much success in all the endeavors. And I know you will do great and I know that you will reach back and take one with you. God bless you, brother.
Thank you, Alderman Brookins. The chair recognizes Alderman Napolitano.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support of this. Mike, in city terms, I guess we could say we came on the job together, or at least this job together. I wish you nothing but the best and luck. The term that's constant here today is you're a family guy, like myself. And I think we've talked about that in the past. You always have to put family first and it's so good to see that you do it. Take the time, let them know how much you love them. Kiss them all today when you get home and tell them daddy's home and will always be home. You won't be working the 12 to 25 hours a day. I think it's more than 24, so. But that being said, in your new job, if you come across that character that, when you need that good-looking Italian, well-built guy, I could play his friend, but not so good-looking, heavyset Italian guy, just keep my number. But God bless you and go get it, buddy. All the best. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Napolitano. The chair recognizes Alderman Martin.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to be associated with this, but also to lament the fact that the light-skinned black mafia is losing its chairman. But, you know, in seriousness, I just want to echo two things that are worth underscoring. One, the fact that some of the votes that I am and will be most proud of are votes that weren't needed whatsoever. They were unanimous votes associated with your community because of the wonderful work that you and everyone that you work alongside help bring to fruition. And so as I think months and years from now, when I tell folks, say, I was on city council for a little bit of time, what was I most proud to be associated with? It's the stuff that includes what your community needs, what they deserve, and what's long overdue. So thank you for that. And then second, obviously, the family man that you are. It's, as a lot of folks have mentioned, it's hard to be a parent. It's hard to be a parent of young kids, hard to be a parent of young kids during the pandemic, hard to be the parent of young kids on a day like today. Walking your kids to school, given what happened in Texas yesterday. And so when I think about how we can best juggle this work, this 25-hour-a-day job, coupled with the 24-hour-a-day job that we're at home, and there's never a perfect balance. But as some folks mentioned, we were blessed to see your children on Zoom meetings. We were blessed to hear them in the background during calls. And knowing at times that, hey, give me a minute, colleague, I gotta tend to my child. And the patience and the love that you showed were appropriate. Even when some of us thought, hey, we have something really important to share. It's like, nah, we don't always have things that are as important as we think. And being able to see how you juggled that, and I'm sure you would say imperfectly like the rest of us would, was just of real value for a young father like myself and a colleague. So I'll just leave by saying, we are, as a council, we are lucky to have had you as a colleague. Our city is lucky to have had you as a servant. We need more people like you in public service. And on behalf of everybody else here, I'm lucky to call you a colleague, which you will always be. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Martin. We're heading into the home stretch here. By my count, we have four more speakers. The chair recognizes Alderman Riley.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Alderman Scott, Michael, these are difficult words for me to say. But I've never liked you. And I'm glad you're leaving. No, seriously, Michael, when you joined the city council, you dramatically raised the IQ around here. And it's been fun watching you do your work. You represent one of the most challenging wards in the city and have done such incredible things to move the needle there. And that takes real leadership and you display it every day. So from the bottom of my heart, I will miss you very much and I do hope you stay in touch. Great luck on your new endeavors. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Riley. The chair recognizes Alderman Viegas.
Thank you, Madam President. I also stand to be associated with this resolution. And really congratulate Michael for doing such a great job, staying persistent in dealing with government and understanding that it doesn't move as quickly as we'd like. The investments that you fought for are game changers for the West Side of the city and really for the city of Chicago. So I want to congratulate you for leaving public service and entering private sector. You're a director in the Park District, an Alderman in the city of Chicago, chairman of a committee. But you've shown us that the most important titles that you respect are dad and husband. And as a family man, I appreciate that because it puts it into perspective as to why we do what we do. And so I wish you much luck in the private sector and look forward to working with you moving forward. Congratulations, Michael. Good luck.
The chair recognizes Alderman Maldonado.
Thank you, Madam President. Michael, I've known you for seven years. You came to the council two years after I came to the council. But I knew your dad for many more years than I have ever met you. In fact, you know, your dad and I had scheduled breakfast twice a year. And we used to hang out at the little place that is called The Breakfast Club in West Town. But I'm happy for you and very happy for you today because, like the saying goes, there is life after politics. And I'm happy because you found the perfect moment to leave because now you're joining the same industry that your dad was into, the entertainment industry. Your dad went from city government into be the first president and CEO of Comcast in Chicago. And now you're going to join the same industry that your father was into, following in footsteps. You know, if you are like me, when I delivered the eulogy about my dad, I always said, Dad, if I'm ever 25% of what you were in terms of the caliber of a human being, I'm going to be happy with myself. And I'm sure that you think and feel the same way. So congratulations and wish you the best of luck in your future endeavors.
Thank you, Alderman Maldonado. And I believe our last speaker is Chairman Viegas back.
Thank you, Madam President. Maybe we can circle back around to Alderman Urban. I know he's always been eloquent in the way he talks about our colleagues. And I think what we saw earlier was an indication of how much Michael Scott means to him as well as to each of us. I didn't see the resolution, but I'll just say that I think everything I've heard all of you say about our colleague, Michael Scott, can be compiled in that one resolution and probably more. And that satisfies all the thoughts and ideas and beliefs and values that I think he's worked with us on over the last several years. So when I saw the article about him leaving and the family discussion in there, as all of you who have kids and grandkids know, that's of vital importance to each one of us. And so there's, I would just say that as you move forward, Michael, you've always been a kind-hearted person, warm-hearted. Every time I walk in that door, you have a smile on your face, which to me has been, during COVID, during the pandemic, something to look forward to every time I walked in here. You've always been calm, cool, collected in every issue that we've worked on together. And that really means a lot to me and I think to every person in this room. So we appreciate that and know that you'll carry on as a mentor to new leaders in your ward and throughout this city. And that's the best thing we can ask for. So thank you very much for your service and all that you've done for your family and the city. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Clerk Valencia.
Alderman Harris.
I'm clerk Valencia to make a comment.
Hearing no objections, so are you.
I very rarely use this podium, but I had to stand up and say that I am so proud of my brother and friend. And you have a lot of fans at the Office of City Clerk. We love seeing your smiling face coming in and you greet everyone from the front line all the way to the managers with the utmost respect and kindness. And your heart is above everyone else. You put everyone above yourself. And I know Natasha is ready. And I'm going to have your resignation letter framed for when I see you guys next, for her going away gift. But I just want to say you have left a legacy and imprint on the youth of your ward. To see young people see us in these spaces where we traditionally do not belong, you've made something feel possible and reach for so many people who feel left behind. And I'm going to see you around and I'm so proud of you to step away while you're still high, riding high and going to do something else and building a legacy in other places. So congratulations to my brother.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I too stand in support of my friend, Michael Scott. Words that come to mind are gentleman, a steady hand, balance, respectful, and respected. I think you've heard that today from all corners of our city, your colleagues on whom you have made a lasting impact. Because of who you are, because of what you've done and the way in which you've carried yourself. And let me just emphasize a couple of points that are just a sample of Alderman Scott's legacy. What you've done in your time in North Landale has shown people in that community that the seemingly impossible was possible. Whether it's the 1,000 new homes that are becoming to North Landale that will completely transform the landscape of that community and give people who live there great homes on which to build a family and wealth. The economic development, just in the last year, over $100 million that have come to the community of North Landale because of your hard work and our partnership, working together. Good-paying jobs. and our partnership, working together. Good-paying jobs, jobs on which you can build a future on and pass wealth. Those are the things that are part of your legacy. You are, of course, as you've heard and you know, an incredible family man, a loving father, and a very devoted spouse. And I think those are some of your most, strongest and most notable characteristics. I will say for myself personally, literally from the time we first met, just a little over three years ago, you've been kind, you've been generous, you've been my friend, you've been my confidant, and I am forever grateful. We've weathered a lot of storms together. And I think we've built some incredible things that will be a lasting monument to the kind of person that you are, the selfless public servant. We return you now to your wife and your family, and to, I think, an incredibly exciting and bright future. And I know that your future employer is very excited and feels very lucky that you said yes. Our loss is their gain, but I know that you'll continue to do great things for our city. And my love of you is deep and profound and will endure. So I just want to say thank you. Now, the truth is, ladies and gentlemen, there is no formal resolution. This was, this was something that was the impetus of Chairman Urban, and rightfully so. But maybe we can call this, given what words have been spoken, the following: north, south, east, west, Michael Scott is the best. So please rise and celebrate our colleagues. Sir, if you'd like, the floor, the floor is yours.
Get away, brother Baines.
No crying in baseball. I'd like to journey a little bit in history, right? From the time I can remember, I wanted to, I wanted this job. My mother, who served as a ward superintendent, I think in the early, not the early, the late 80s, she had just been appointed to ward superintendent in the 24th Ward. And I believe Jesse Madison was the alderperson at the time. And we were talking, and he asked me, what did I want to do when I, when I grew up? And I said to him, I want your job. And that was the beginning, I guess, of this story. I've said often, and many of you have said, that my father was a great servant in the city of Chicago. And I believe wholeheartedly that service is the cornerstone of the Scott legacy. You know, I serve, my sister serves, my grandparents served, we've even brought my wife into the family business, and she serves now. And she's passing that along to our children. And I have been so fortunate to be able to serve the residents of the 24th Ward in the city of Chicago, a city that has given me so much, and a ward that has given my family and I so much. I have been blessed and honored to be called their alderman. I have been blessed and honored to serve with each and every one of you. I have a particular story, I can't go through all of them, I mean for everybody on this council. We may not always see eye to eye, but I know that everybody in this room has the best interest of their constituency, the best interests of the city of Chicago, and the best interests of their families. Every day they come into this, this, this building, every day they set foot on this floor. And it has been a true honor and a privilege to serve with each and every one of you. This is a room full of integrity, a room full of hard-working men and women, a, a room full of just good and decent people. And I appreciate every phone call, every text, every congratulatory hug, every word that was spoke about me today. It is greatly appreciated. And, and know that the relationships that, that I formed with each and every one of you are genuine. And so when, when I have conversations with you within that year period, it is friendship-driven, because I genuinely find you guys as family and friends. I was called brother by so many people, and I, I really believe that you guys are like family to me. We have weathered the storm through COVID. We are weathering the storm through public safety. And, and I just appreciate each and every one of you and your council. To you, Mayor, I appreciate the relationship that we have. I appreciate the fact that you placed your trust in me to lead the Committee on Education. It is something that is, has been near and dear to me because of my father's association with the Chicago Public Schools. And I will forever be grateful and honored to have served in that position. Again, this is not, this is not goodbye. I have most of you on speed dial, and I will continue to use that. I think the two, the two most important things that I've heard today, one is that, that I have been a good father, and, and for people to see that is really important to me. Two, I have always tried and have not always been successful in being a good husband, right? It is always, it's difficult when you, when you sacrifice this job for your family. And that is one of the reasons that, that I am stepping away. The, the last thing I, now I got a couple other things. One, one, you know, being the son of, of Michael Scott Sr. was often difficult for me, right? When I, when I first went to the Park District, you know, I got a lot of folks saying, man, you got this job because of your father, right? That made me work even harder, right? That made me roll up my sleeves and work even harder. Because although my father has a great name, the worst thing that I think I could do was trample on that name, right? Michael Scott Jr. had to have carried the water or the mantle of the Scott name. And, and that is very, very important to me. And to hear many of my colleagues recognize the fact that I've worked hard and I have created a name for myself, and, and I'm not just Michael Scott Jr., I am Michael Scott standing on his own, is, is something that speaks really, really close to my heart, and I, and I thank you for that. I'm, I'm gonna single out a couple of people, and just understand, I got, I got love for everybody, but there's a couple people that I gotta single out. Mother Austin, you have been such a friend and somebody that, you know, when I, when I need advice, whether it's warranted or unwarranted, you gonna give it to me, right? And you, you gonna give it to me for, you gonna give it to me for real. I remember probably my first budget meeting, I'm sitting right there in the front row, and not paying attention, I'm talking to Derek Curtis, and you said, Alderman Scott, do you have a motion? I'm like, yeah, I got a motion. And you was like, no, no, that's not how it goes. It's move, do pass. And said, give me an order, give me an order, make sure that I'm right. And, and it's important to make sure that when we're here and we're in these roles, that people see competent black men. And, and you have helped me be that. And so I, I thank you. To, to the ladies in the Black Caucus, all of you, you have a profound impact on me, like sisters. And, and anytime I need anything, I can call on any one of you, and I appreciate that. Last but not least, the big homie from the West Side, I would not be here if it were not for you and your family. And I, I want you to know that I sincerely appreciate the investment that you made in me. And I, I hope that I have made you proud, because I am proud of you and all the things that you've done on the West Side, and I wanted to emulate that. So I'm gonna close with this. I read a scripture this morning, and it said, be quick to listen, slow to speak, and slow to anger. And that's how, what I've tried to do here in council. And, and I hope that I've made my mother and my fam, my mother, my father, and most importantly, my children and my wife proud. Thank you.
So we will formalize a proper resolution to provide to our friend and colleague, Alderman Scott. Alderman Mitchell, do you move for passage of these resolutions in the omnibus?
Madam President, I move passage of these resolutions in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
I now move a return to regular order of business.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Next up, ladies and gentlemen, Communications, Madam Clerk.
A communication from her honor, the mayor, to the Honorable, the City Council of the City of Chicago. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit here with, together with Chairman Talafaro, Spazato, Scott, and Sawyer, a resolution calling the Committee on Public Safety, the Committee on Special Events, Cultural Affairs and Recreation, the Committee on Education and Child Development, and the Committee on Human Health and Human Relations to promptly convene a joint hearing regarding summer community safety. The favorable consideration of this resolution will be appreciated for the two years. Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, referred to a joint committee of the Committees on Public Safety, the Committee on Special Events, Cultural Affairs and Recreation, the Committee on Education and Child Development, and the Committee on Health and Human Relations. I, City Clerk Anna Valencia, hereby inform the City Council that the following document was filed in my office, letter of resignation from Alderman Michael Scott Jr. Your honor, that concludes the reports and communications from the mayor and the other city officers.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next up, committee reports. Rules Committee Chairman Harris.
Madam President and members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on Committees Rules, which met on Tuesday, May 24th, the committee recommends the following approval. The committee recommends the approval of ordinance 2022-466, Journal Correction of December 15th, 2021. Madam President, I move passage of this item by a roll call.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Voting is now open. Please hit refresh and cast your vote. If you need help, please raise your hand, and we'll send someone over. I am now going to call on those aldermen who have not cast their, their vote electronically. Alderman King, Alderman Lasbada, Alderman Brookins.
Aye.
Alderman Brookins, can you please cast your vote? And we will also record you as an aye. Alderman Burnett.
I refuse to use this.
Embrace the technology, Alderman, embrace it. Thank you, thank you, Austin. Alderman Vasquez.
Aye.
Alderman Vasquez will record you as an aye. Alderman Napolitano.
Aye.
Alderman Napolitano is an aye. We will record you. He's frozen. Alderman Burnett just walked in. Alderman Burnett.
Yes.
Aye. We will record you as an aye. I don't see King.
Alderman Martin.
Alderman Martin, I'll record you as an aye as well. Alderman Martin, Alderman Burnett, we will record you as an aye.
I don't see Lasbada.
Okay, Alderman King, we will record you as an aye as well. All right, the voting is now closed.
The ayes are 49, the nays are zero. Alderman Kapelman on the motion for reconsideration.
Madam President, I move to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor of a motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye. All those opposed saying nay. The motion for reconsideration fails. Chairman Harris.
Next is ordinance 2022-1100, which is an amendment to municipal code, Chapter 2-156, by modifying various sections and adding new sections to 2-156-301 regarding governmental ethics. I've been noticed that Alderman Scott and Alderman Cardenas would to move to defer and publish this item. Ordinance 2022-212, dash, I'm sorry, art, ordinance 2022-1217 is an amendment to the municipal code, Chapter 4-6, to repeal Section 4-6230G5 regarding booting of motor, motor vehicles on private property. I move approval of this recommendation by the item, that the item be referred to Committee on License and Governmental Protection by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Committees and Rules and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Finally, the committee approved a list of 14 nominees to the mayor for consideration for the appointment of the interim Community Commission for Public Safety and Accountability. Thank you. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman Harris. Next up, the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Chairman Tunny.
Madam President, members of the City Council, presenting a series of reports for your Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards, which held a meeting on May 24th, 2022. These reports are grouped for convenience. The following items were passed by a majority of the members present. Page one contains document number 02022-1035, the Amendment of Municipal Code, Section 17-6-043-G, to exclude food and beverage retail sales use group within planned manufacturing district number 4B from required floor area limits. I move passage of this item by the last most favorable roll call of the Committee on Committees and Rules, report, and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Page one contains item number 020195785, for the address commonly known as 1628 through 1650 West 17th Street and 1629 through 1651 West 16th Street. I've been notified that Alderman Spazato and Alderman Reboyes moved to defer and publish this item.
Be deferred and published.
Page one through 11 contains various map amendments in the First, Third, 11th, 16th, 18th, 21st, 22nd, 23rd, 25th, 27th, 30th, 31st, 33rd, 39th, 40th, 44th, 45th, 46th, 47th, 48th, and 50th wards. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Page 12 contains document number Order 2022-114, a fee waiver for 1039 through 1059 West Lawrence Avenue, located in a historical landmark district. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
And lastly, page 12 contains various large signs over 100 square feet in area, 24 feet above grade, in the First, 11th, 14th, 24th, 25th, 32nd, 41st, and 50th wards. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, that concludes my zoning report.
Thank you, sir. The chair recognizes Alderman Sixchel Lotus.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And
And I just want to make a brief comment on the current situation in the 20-Fifth Ward. It is clear that oftentimes we talk about addressing violence in the city of Chicago. We talk about transforming spaces for young people. We talk about investment.
And Alderman, we have some conversation that's being picked up on a mic. Can you please, just out of respect for the Alderman, keep your voices down? Please proceed, Alderman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. When we talk about in City Council about the need of investment and addressing violence, I think that we have to start moving away from the platitudes and start acting as such. When we see the conditions in our communities, we have to take action that is talk about listening to our communities. And what we saw today, again, is yet another attempt of this administration to take away the voice of our communities. In the 20-Fifth Ward, we have a serious situation of displacement, as you know. The issue of corruption and developers taking over our community is a very real issue. In the last ten years, we have lost over 14,000 low-income residents because of the corruption of the past and the lack of due process. With the process yesterday in zoning committee, we voted on an item that has overwhelming support of parishioners and residents who demand a clear and a transparent process to decide on a local zoning matter. The administration today, using maneuvering, is denying that right of our community to decide and allowing unsighting with a developer that yesterday did not even have the decency to even let us know what is the plan for a site of two acres, sacred site in our community. I have communicated this today to Inspector General because it was expected. We cannot allow nonprofits that don't pay taxes to try to profit from our communities. It's a shame what we continue to see from this administration. The lack of process on the casino, the lack of due process in many decisions that we made every day.
Sir.
And I'm not done yet.
You are out of order now.
I'm not out of order, man.
You're out of order.
I'm not out of order.
You are out of order.
And I tell you.
You are out of order.
But in this form, every community has the right to have a voice.
You've said your piece, sir.
I didn't say my piece yet.
Then please get to it because you are out of order. Get to it now.
And I'm going to tell you directly and publicly.
You've already done it, sir.
On the relationships that you have with Archidasis and Cardinal Koopich, blindsiding parishioners and residents who have every right to have a set so.
Thank you, sir.
Your political agenda trying to take aldermanic prerogative. Look at what my aldermen have done for our city. It's chaos and you're an incompetent mayor.
Sir, you're out of order and what you've said are blatant lies that will be addressed in due course. Next up, ladies and gentlemen, matters on the agreed calendar. Alderman Harris.
Thank you, Madam President. I've received from the Clerk Anna Valencia a total of six items proposed for the agreed calendar consists of congratulatory, commemorative, tributary resolutions for the following aldermen: Alderman Hairston, Alderman Lee, Alderman Rodriguez, Alderman Riley, and Alderman Osterman. I move them in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you.
Next up, new business. Mr. Clerk, please call the wards, beginning with the 50th.
Claims, free permits, license to exemptions, which are referred to the Committee on Finance. Zoning amendments, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Traffic regulations, traffic control signals and traffic signs, which are referred to the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Exemption from physical barrier requirement for commercial driveway alley access for parking facilities, which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Almenhadden and others have opposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Section 14X-8-8-802.2.2, by modifying heating requirements for dwelling and sleeping units, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Almenhadden and others have opposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Section 14X-8-803.2, by modifying cooling requirements for nursing homes and senior housing facilities, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Almen Riley has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Sections 9-12-090 and 9-12-100, regarding impalement of vehicles involved in drag racing or drifting, which is referred to Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Almen Napolitano and others have proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Chapter 4-64, by adding a new section, by adding new sections, 4-64-518 and 4-64-519, regarding requirements for prohibiting issuance of additional retail tobacco dealer licenses, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Almen Ramirez Rosa has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Section 4-60-023, to allow additional packaged goods licenses on portion of West Fullerton Avenue, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Almen Ramirez Rosa also has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Michael H. Bankston III Avenue, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Almen Telfiero has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Chapter 4-4, by adding a new section, 4-4-125, regarding prohibition of third-party events, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Almen Telfiero also has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Section 17-6-0403F, to permit non-accessory parking and RVs or boat storage within planned manufacturing district 15, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Almen Siccio Lopez and others have proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Magda Ramirez Castanina Way, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Almen O'Shea and others have proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Chapter 2-96, by adding a new section, 2-96-050, regarding installation requirements for police observation devices, which is referred to Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Almen Lopez has proposed resolution to call for hearings on the failure of Chicago public schools to meet religious dietary needs of students, which is referred to Committee on Health and Human Relations. And Alderman Raboyas has proposed ordinance for granted privilege in the public way for Yemenis Fresh Mart, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Your Honor, that concludes the presentation of aldermanic introductions.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Next up, unfinished business. Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I'm aware of two Rule 41 notices that have been filed relating to unfinished business and I defer to Chairman Tunnie and Chairman Tyler Farrow.
Matter before Chairman Tunnie first. Chairman Tunnie.
Here we go. Here we go. Put your seatbelt on. Madam President, I've noticed up pursuant to Rule 41, two items of unfinished business from the Special Committee on the Chicago Casino. First is SR 2022-587, a substitute resolution concerning the development and operation of a casino in the city of Chicago. The second item is SO 2022-1316, a revised substitute ordinance amending titles 2, 4, 8, and 17 of the municipal code regarding a casino in the city of Chicago. I know there'll be a number of people that want to speak. I would like to just make some opening remarks and prepare some final comments, if it's okay with my colleagues. And what I do want to start is mostly, first thing I want to start is on the process. So this item that's in front of us is a procurement item, first and foremost. We have asked, well, we had, first of all, we had state legislation probably three years ago, gave the opportunity for a city of Chicago casino. Subsequent to that, the city asked for interest, qualifications, and ultimately a request for proposal, basically over the last year, year and a half. Come October of 2022, the requests were coming in. We had a public meeting to review all that were interested, and I think at that time there were five. We were at the University of Illinois at Circle. I had the opportunity and expressed an interest to really learn there. I was there for all day. It's a little bit of my industry, certainly hospitality and tourism is my industry. But I really sat and paid a lot of attention to the casino proposals. And mind you, we in the city have been working on a potential casino for many, many years. So it was, it is time, from a process point, to just get this in front of the council in a transparent way and in a competitive way. I'd heard some of my colleagues saying, well, we should just find the site and then bring people to the site. And people had talked about, I know Alderman Mitchell had talked about, bring it to the southeast side, you know, the steel plant and others. This is not our job in terms of the RFP process. We don't know where the best location is. We are not casino operators. But we needed to have the competition among, among the industry to say, what is the best opportunity from professionals who do this worldwide? And I honestly, when I queried most of my colleagues on this issue, a lot of us thought, you know, McCormick Place, the old lakeside would be the ideal center, okay? And as you, as we've gone through this process, we have heard loud and clear from MPEA on reasons why the casino basically doesn't belong along the lakefront as part of the convention business. And the layers of approval, not only MPEA or the state and such. But when we had five, we went through that process. I think the first report was dated in March. I know Jenny and Samir and all of us, we've done umpteen, I don't even know how many aldermanic briefings, even as the committee was formed, which was basically, I think it was March. But that being said, when we got the report in March, it basically gave all five proposals the reasons for and against and the revenue projections and everything that was entertained. And I know us as council members had every opportunity to weigh in and to get involved at whatever level they wanted and when they wanted. The committee was formed and thank you, and thank you, Mayor, for allowing me to chair the committee. I've enjoyed it and I hopefully enjoy it through the rest of today. But I do feel that this process, if those that wanted to be involved and to learn more and to be more active, and many of you were, especially the aldermen that were around the sites that were of the five. And I know more of you got involved as we got, as we got more involved in the process. So that being said, based on the procurement process, the administration and her team winnowed the choices from five to three and ultimately made a recommendation to the mayor on the Bally site. So we're going to have a lot of discussion about the pros and cons of the Bally proposal. But I do want to say, just in the effort of being transparent and being overly outreach to all the members about any questions, comments, how we can actually do a better ordinance and a better resolution. And I think some of the product that we've seen over the last probably six weeks has made it a better product. But I do want to end on the process to say, if we have the opportunity to pass this today, there is a much more, there is going to be a detailed PD process. We're amending the PD of which is the Tribune site. We're going to go back to the community, back to Plan Commission. And before we get to Plan Commission, we're going to have a thorough engagement process with the area around the permanent site and the temporary site. So those people that are primarily affected can have their voice heard in saying, it's coming to our neighborhood. How can we adjust, whether it be traffic congestion, security and such? So I'm going to leave it at that in terms of the process. I'm going to yield to my vice chair, at the will of the mayor, to talk a little bit about his role in the committee and some of the attributes that he brought and some of his goals, especially on minority hiring and equity. And then we'll open it up and then I hope I have the chance to close. Thank you, Mayor.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Madam President. This process on gaming, and let's think about this. This is more than about gaming. This is about how this enterprise will help enrich the lives of everyday Chicagoans. When we looked at this process from an investment perspective, never have I seen so many people in the city that we know have been involved that has processed, has moved beyond the usual suspects. We all know their names to people that we know but have always had invested interest in our city. I was extremely proud to hear about an opportunity where Ms. Jones or Ms. Jackson or Ms. Lopez would have an opportunity to be a part of something that has eluded the city of Chicago for years. There were four buckets that were concerning to me when we started this process. One was procurement, construction, employment, and ownership. All four of those items, the needles have moved from the beginning of this process to where we are today. I want to thank Jenny Bennett for listening to the concerns that many of us have raised in this particular process and getting us to a point today where many of us feel comfortable about supporting this casino. This will be the first time that we have utilized the formula for using socio-economically disadvantaged areas so that we can help lift people out of poverty. I don't know how many times I've heard the story of we're going to hire somebody from the neighborhood for them to be left behind when the project leaves. This turns the tide on that so that the same guy that was hired that lived in North Londale or the same kid that was hired that lives in Roseland can still stick around with that company after the job has moved on. But again, the bottom line of this, this is about revenue. And my father would tell me that cars don't run on hopes and prayers. Cars run on gas, so pull your money out when you want to go somewhere. Government and we don't run on hopes and prayers. We have obligations that we need to meet. There are people that are depending upon us to do the right thing as relates to providing the revenue that's needed for our pension systems. We have a billion plus in obligations just next year alone and that number does not decrease as time moves forward. The state has put us on a trajectory where we can get to a 90% funding ratio sometime in the 2050s. But again, those investments must occur now. My wife talks about, she sits on the pension funds for the city and shakes her head at times because of having to sell investments to make payroll. That is not a position that we want any pension fund to be in as we look forward to trying to provide and meet the obligations of our police and fire and our other municipal employees that have given their hearts and soul to this city. So that revenue is owed to them and we have a responsibility not to just let this go. Everyone talks about it and we get nimbyism. And I respect each and every one of my colleagues that have stood up on behalf of their residents. And while I will say that this is, we talk about supporting and yielding to the wishes of our residents, but we almost understand, we are the Chicago City Council and we have a greater responsibility than just our individual wards. While some of us have to use that lens While some of us have to use that lens in a broader sense, I understand that people have to stand up for their communities. But at the same time, we also must stand up for this city. And this revenue source, in my opinion, is probably one of the last largest, larger pieces of revenue that we will be afforded short of increasing the property taxes to meet these obligations. And so while I know that this is, this may be a difficult decision for some, I think we have to look at the bigger picture. And the bigger picture is that we see millions of dollars leave our city on an annual basis, going to Indiana, going to Des Plaines, going to Elgin, Joliet, wherever it is that people like to go to partake in a game or two of chance. However, it is our responsibility, because we've been given the opportunity, to capitalize on this investment. And this is not just an investment for Bally's. As I said earlier, this is an investment in all of Chicago. When we can see the generational wealth potential to transfer from, for communities that have never had a seat at the table, never had an opportunity in the riverboat expansions, never had an opportunity in rivers. When we see these opportunities for members of our community, I think we have to take advantage of them as some of these opportunities will never be afforded to individuals again. I believe the way that Bally's and the city has structured this deal will, will be a national model going forward whereby individuals and communities that have been marginalized for years will have an opportunity to transfer wealth in ways they never imagined. And believe me, when you, when you have something to pass to your children or your children's children, that inspires change, that inspires hope that we would like to see, not only with these individuals, but with those in our respective communities. We have to think about this greater than just a casino. This is an opportunity, as they say, the opportunity of a lifetime. And it's incumbent upon us to make sure that we take advantage of this and provide our citizens the relief they need, protect our employees as we've been asked to do, and to make sure that we do everything we can to maximize revenue on behalf of the citizens of this city. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Irving. Apparently no other members want to speak to this matter. The chair recognizes Alderman Rodriguez. If you'd like to speak to this matter, please follow the normal course and raise your hand.
So thank you, Madam President. You know, I've said all along that I could not support a casino that did not ensure there were good quality jobs for our communities. As a matter of fact, Alderman Taylor and I were just discussing that, given that our communities are very similar as far as union employment and working class folks. As we've learned, labor unions who represent gaming workers were able to secure labor peace agreement with Bally's that will cover workers across the casino operations. What does that mean? It means the attendant at the valet stand, the dealer at the blackjack table, the bartender who serves you a drink, the stagehand at the entertainment venue, and the engineer who keeps all the buildings running, all of those workers will have the chance to earn family sustaining wages and benefits. It means those workers will be able to join a union freely and fairly with no opposition or retaliation from their employer. It means the casino will create thousands of quality jobs in our city. I want to congratulate the unions who are part of that effort. They deserve a round of applause from us here today. In addition, hospitality workers have experienced unprecedented hardships due to the pandemic. We look forward to bringing a world-class casino to Chicago that will help remedy those inequities and provide good, family-sustaining jobs to our communities. My ward disproportionately has individuals that are members of Unite Here. You've heard from many of those folks speaking Spanish here today in public comment and in our committee meeting earlier. I'm here to fight for them. I'm here to bring in resources and jobs for them to make sure that they remain employed. In addition, most recently, under the leadership of my good friend Alderman Vasquez, myself and many others at this table fought so that those first $40 million were in a lockbox. They go to pay the pensions of our first responders. I think that's a win for our city. And lastly, I'd say we were sent here to address and stabilize our city's finances. And the fact that many of these revenues will be earmarked towards our pension system, again, towards our first responders, is something that I need to stand by as a supporter of union wages and as a supporter of the promises that we've made as a government to our union members to fund their pensions. Due to all this, Madam President and my colleagues, I stand in favor of this proposal and urge my colleagues to do so as well. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Rodriguez. The chair recognizes Alderman Hopkins.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise in opposition to this decision today and urge my colleagues not to make this mistake while we have a chance. We need more time to analyze this. We need more time to get the questions fully answered, to vet this proposal and see if we can do better because I think we can. In my opinion, of the three finalist sites, the site at Chicago Avenue and Halsted was by far the least desirable of the three finalists. Again, it's a subjective opinion, but I arrived at it after a careful analysis. I tried to keep an open mind to the extent that I could, read all the reports, talked to the neighborhood, looked at the logistics, looked at the traffic study, and it just became clear that that location is the most difficult and problematic of the three finalists. So why are we proceeding with that decision? I believe that the competitive process that Chairman Tunney alluded to was designed to be competitive, and perhaps it was, but one of the competitors had an unfair advantage. It's really that simple. Going back to the very beginning, when they were given the opportunity to make changes to their minority participation piece after that rather unorthodox system they came up with, it was deemed to be unacceptable, they had a chance to change it after they submitted their proposal, which they only paid one fee for, right? We all know that. They had two proposals that they submitted. Another entity submitted two proposals and had to pay two fees. They were told they only had to pay one fee for a dubious explanation that there was some changes within their ownership group in the two applications. When the special committee was formed, I was led to believe that we had to make this decision. And yet, before we even completed our evaluation process, the decision was usurped and it was announced that Bally's had been chosen, making a mockery of the rest of the proceedings of the committee. The decision was done. Then we find out that Union Gaming, the consultant who came under the guise of objectivity and was analyzing the data, actually had a dog in the fight and had a previous undisclosed financial relationship with the ultimate winning bid. The labor agreement should have been a wash, and yet it was turned into an advantage for Bally's. The other two applicants who were not selected agreed to similar terms. There was no advantage there, and yet it was allowed to be presented as one. And now, just yesterday, we find out that the law firm who drafted the contract had a previous undisclosed relationship with the winning applicant. This all adds up to an unfair advantage, and it's the explanation for why the least qualified, least desirable candidate is being selected here today. This is a mistake and the ramifications of this decision will continue on in the future. I urge you colleagues, I know the votes are there, change your mind, vote no on this proposal and send it back to the drawing board. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Hopkins. The chair recognizes Alderman Taylor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with Alderman Riley and Alderman Hopkins about, I feel like we're moving too fast. There are a lot of questions that are unanswered, and while we all know this casino is coming and we cannot do anything about it, I feel like we haven't dotted our i's and crossed our t's. Now, I'm paid to represent the people in my board, and so I will be voting yes because those jobs are very important. But I asked, are 80 or 90% of those jobs guaranteed to people in the city? That's a question that we need to be able to answer, and nobody has been able to answer that question yet. The community has asked us because they're unsure themselves. I think this process was flawed, of course, and I think we could take a little bit more time. If I'm not mistaken, we've waited 23 years. A couple of more months won't hurt us. And so I am voting yes because my community asked me to. But I asked, Madam Chair, that we slow down, that we answer more questions, because there are plenty of questions that just have not been answered. And I think that's what's fair. I appreciate you bringing this to us. I appreciate there being a council now. I was not happy because I felt like the committee for the casino was nothing but chairs and vice chairs, when it could have been all of us. 50 plus one is way better. But I won't, I won't fight that fight. What I will say is, please do all you can to make this right by our community because we only get one chance. And I don't want to sit here a couple of years later, like we did with marijuana, and say what we should have, could have done. My grandmother used to say it all the time, if if was a fifth, we'd all be drunk. And so I want us to think about the decision we're making. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Alderman Taylor. I believe that Alderman and Tunney will respond to some of the questions that have been raised in his summation. Next up, the chair recognizes Alderman Riley.
Thank you, Madam President. Wanted to respond very quickly to a comment that was made by a previous speaker about our collective responsibility to our constituents, but then our greater responsibility to the city as a whole. And the suggestion that those who are opposed to this proposal are simply looking at it through a not-in-my-backyard lens. And that couldn't be further from the truth in this particular instance. I take very seriously my greater responsibility to the city of Chicago. I represent the 42nd Ward. The 42nd Ward continues to grow exponentially under my leadership. In fact, the Ward has grown so much, it actually was almost half of the city's entire growth over the last 10 years was in the 42nd Ward. We do big, meaningful, impactful projects, and we've been filling up that Neighborhood Opportunity Fund with my colleague Alderman Burnett, which benefits all of us. So I do understand the difference. I'd also like to acknowledge the excellent work done by our friends in organized labor. The Chicago Federation of Labor and Unite Here have done really excellent work, and I've told them as much. But this is not a choice between labor or not. We all want to support organized labor when we can. I value those relationships just like each and every one of you do. And believe me, in my heart of hearts, I wish I could be supporting this because I like supporting the men and women of organized labor. They are our working families. But this isn't really about whether or not there's going to be a casino or whether it'll be built with union jobs, whether it would be operated with union jobs, or whether the money's going to go to the pensions. We know all of those things are true. And I think that the committee hearings, although there were only three, each of them produced good results incrementally as we went along. And in the first meeting, I was among a chorus of aldermen who said that we expect, no matter what, whomever the bidder is, that this will be built with union labor and operated with union labor. And Bally's heard that loud and clear, and so did the administration. And then by the next hearing, that was done, and that made all of us happy. And I'm very, very glad to know that there's a labor peace agreement included in this proposal. I just don't support the proposal. This is really a question of where does this casino go and when will it go there? There's been a lot of talk about process. I'm one of those folks here who's been very disappointed in this process. As Alderman Hopkins mentioned, a special committee was created and convened to ostensibly review the three finalists and vet them publicly and ask lots of tough questions. And then, it was my impression at the time, that we would then make a recommendation. But that was wrong. Instead, the administration made their final decision and our mission changed. Then it was our job to vote yes or no in a zero-sum fashion for Bally's or not. And I think that's an unfortunate set of circumstances for all of us. All of us have been put in this pressure cooker artificially. There's no hard deadline here. Folks just want to get it done quick. And what we've seen, as this has been aired out over just a few weeks, each day that goes by, we learn new details about this proposal that were not previously disclosed to us. But to give you a sense of how extraordinary this process has been, we did something on Monday this city council's never done before. Gabbled into special, we gabled in a city council meeting, did some business, recessed that meeting, gabled in our special casino committee hearing, voted on this ordinance, concluded that meeting, came back and restarted the city council meeting to defer and publish this to make a vote happen today. That's pretty extraordinary, and I'd look at that as a red flag. Another issue for me is, is this financial analysis, and Alderman Hopkins alluded to this as well. It was prepared by Union Gaming, and I'm not here to disparage Union Gaming. They are used throughout the industry, and the administration's right about that. But they're so popular throughout the industry that they do work with Bally's. And while the financial analysis group is a different division from the folks that helped Bally's raise $700 million, that is still a bit of a concern. I'm not saying there's anything improper there, but the optics are horrible. And my concern, despite being told there's a firewall, for a lot of us, that's a big leap of faith, and again, that's a, that's another red flag. But beyond the veracity of the study, whether you agree with Union Gaming being engaged to perform it or not, in our last committee hearing on Monday, we went through the math, the methodology that got to the projections that, that Union Gaming gave to us. And in walking through it with our excellent CFO, it came out that we determined the casino has to win a million dollars a day, every day, 365 days a year, which means they need to handle, by their math, about $20 million a day, every day, 365 days a year. And when you do that math and break it down, that means every day, 365 days a year, 667 gamblers must gamble $3,000 each per day, or 13,300 gamblers, $1,500 each per day. That's some pretty rosy math, and I have an issue with that. I, I just don't, I can't accept that. It seems like it's an inflated number. And so during our, I thought it was a very healthy discussion on Monday, probably our best hearing yet, Chairman, I asked, well, how confident is the operator in these projections for our pensions? And I said, well, they're very confident. You were, you're all here, you heard it, very confident. I said, great. I said, so I assume they're willing to guarantee that $200 million or so a year in revenue? And if they fall short of the projection, they'll hold us harmless, they'll make up the difference, right? And I was told, no, that's, that's not the case. That's a, that's another big red flag. We spent a lot of time talking about CFO governance. And again, I am a huge fan of our CFO. The mayor picked a really good one. So this is not aimed at anyone personally. It's the position. And it could even be that the administrator of all this could be someone other than the CFO. But whomever that person is, the way this ordinance is structured and the agreement is structured, that individual have tremendous control over this once this leaves our hands today. And admittedly, there is some more tweaking and changing to do in the agreement and contract, and that's understandable, that happens with big deals. But for those of you relying upon ironclad commitments in this agreement related to things like minority hiring and participation, if you read the ordinance, those are still areas where the CFO or designee retains the ability to change those things and waive certain provisions. They did some, make some improvements at our request, and I'll give them credit for that as well. But this is basically a document that is still being written, and this will be our But this is basically a document that is still being written, and this will be our really last meaningful ability to touch it. I wanted to shift to Medina Temple. Obviously, the permanent site is in my colleague Alderman Burnett's ward, but Medina Temple's smack dab in the middle of the 42nd Ward. For those of you who aren't familiar, it's basically at Wabash and Ohio. And we all know from traveling downtown that Ohio and Ontario streets are our two busiest arterial streets in the central business district. They travel east and west from the expressway to the lake. And if you've spent any time on either of those streets, in rush hour, or in the evenings, or in the weekends, you'll know those intersections are failing. There's such pedestrian volume and such vehicular volume, it's very difficult to get through those as it is today. We're still climbing out of a pandemic, mind you. So I think the location is a real challenge. And beyond the traffic, Medina Temple is a landmark building, and it has no parking on-site. And most folks haven't experienced with the casino, you know that they have secured parking on-site so that you have a buffer for the safety of your customers. That is not a possibility here. And so the practical, what we can expect to see here is a lot of folks driving, looking for parking. It'll be in remote garages, probably a block, two, three blocks from the site. And then the question becomes, God willing, they're successful, they have a great night at the casino, and they win a couple thousand dollars on blackjack. That walk from the casino back to that garage structure could be precarious. And this particular location is already in one of the busiest police beats in the 18th District. We have a lot of crime stats there today. And so my concern about the temporary site is that it's going to draw more folks who are looking to engage in criminal activity and rob people. And because of that gap in security between the casino's front door and the garage, I think that's a legitimate concern. It's worth looking at. I'm concerned also that with this 24-hour nature of this business and the fact that it'll have a liquor license like no other in the city of Chicago, 20 hours minimum, that's a big deal. And when the nightclubs shut down in my ward, that's when all the nonsense happens. And the idea that folks can go reload and have a couple more rounds at the casino after they're thrown out of the nightclub, that's not real exciting for me or for anyone who lives or works downtown. Again, I want to wrap it up, because we've all talked about this quite a bit this week. But Alderman Hopkins also mentioned the Cranes article that came out last night. I was surprised as all of you were to read it. And it discusses Taft Law Firm, which is an excellent firm, well-regarded for sure. They've done work with the city for some time. But none of us knew, until last night, reading it in Cranes, that Bally's also has a strong working relationship with Taft. And I understand there's a firewall between their government division and their gambling division, but once again, kind of like Union Gaming, this is the only firm we could have perform this work for us, knowing, or did we know, that there was this potential conflict? That's a concern. And the greatest concern is we're learning it the day of this vote. I would have liked to have known that earlier. That's a red flag. So, folks, there's a reason why, it's not often, by the way, the Sun-Times and the Chicago Tribune's editorial pages agree on something. Well, today, they both agreed, this is moving too quickly. And again, the world doesn't blow up tomorrow if we were to take a bit more time on this. And again, each hearing that we've had in Chairman Tony's committee, we gained more ground. It got a little better, which means we were doing our job, the tough questions, we're working. So why stop now? So I wish the newspapers could vote here today, I know they can't. But I do hope that you took a minute to read the editorial. Again, we all want to create jobs, we all want to have a big investment. This casino is a huge opportunity for us, certainly for the working men and women of organized labor. I want to have it right for them, I want to have it right for the city, I'll make sure it's good for the taxpayer. And it may be with more questioning and tweaks, it could, this could be great. But I think this has gone far too quickly, at a breakneck speed, and the last time I participated in the process like that, it was the parking meter deal. And we got burned on that. And so I've always taken a really careful look ever since. You know, trust but verify. And I've done the math on this one, and it doesn't add up for me. So I respect each of your decisions here. I know you're all in a difficult position, and I appreciate you listening to my concerns and my colleagues' concerns during the debate. But if you have any hesitance in the back of your mind on this, or a weird feeling in your gut, listen to it. And let's take a bit longer to make sure we're really getting this right, because this is a legacy investment and asset for our city. So thank you, Madam President, for your indulgence. I'll be voting no and certainly requesting a roll call vote. Thank you.
Alderman, the chair recognizes Alderman Sikchow-Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I think it's important that we talk about the process of how we got here, and that we honest about our assessment. For anyone in the council, they're still thinking about dismissing some of the already clear indications of irregularities, of rushing a process that must, before anything else, always benefit the city and not special interest groups. It is clear that this proposal has gotten the support, an overwhelming support of the casino operator. And I think the announcement was also made before even the committee appointed by the mayor even had the opportunity to review the process. If you also add to that the clear conflict of interest of having a law firm advising the mayor's office, that also was representing the winner-beater. Let's not hide the facts. I know Mayor Lightfoot likely does not want to hear the facts, and it's convenient to ignore the facts. But the fact of the matter that these are crumbs, and they will be hungered tomorrow, just in a lot of decisions that we continue to see. I think Alderman Hopkins, in detail, has described a failed process, a process that benefits the casino operator at the expense of the rest of the city. I think as legislators, we have the responsibility to review this process, a failed process, and an administration that is more worried about campaign contributions than doing the right thing for the city of Chicago.
You are out of order. You are out of order.
The orders was happening in the city of Chicago.
You are a liar, sir, and you are out of order. I said here, and I will not tolerate you besmirching the hard work of so many people who have worked in this. You may not agree, you may not agree, then vote no. But I will not sit here silently while you besmirch my reputation and the people that work for me from your pettiness of the things that you're trying to do that expose this city to liability, sir. You are out of order. Now, you can express your comments and your views, but you will not tear down the integrity of people who are working just as hard as you are. That is absolutely unacceptable.
It is unacceptable to deny the right of answers to our community. Where would we address the issue of predatory practices of casino operators? We ask for a plan, Mayor Lightfoot, a plan to address that issue. That's what we need to hear from you, not a plan that is going to be discussed after the fact.
You are out of order, and you are lying. Almost every word that comes out of your mouth after you say your name is a lie. You need to stop, sir.
I'm not stopping because I have the right to speak. I am enough of discrimination.
You are a liar, sir.
I have every right to speak at any other colleague. Enough is enough.
Yeah, enough is enough. Please cease and desist.
Everything I said here is a fact.
Please cease and desist.
The chair recognizes Alderwoman Hadden.
This process is a shame and a disgrace to the city of Chicago.
You've said your piece, sir.
I did. And I hope the city of Chicago remembers this, 2023.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. I can't tell, is the mic on? All right. We're going to take a collective deep breath. Take a moment. I'm going to be supporting this casino. I'm supporting it because of the residents in my ward, who will be impacted by the jobs. I'm going to be supporting it by our budget, that's going to get some revenue, much-needed revenue for pension payments. I deeply feel the concerns of colleagues, Hopkins, Riley, in committee the other day, Alderwoman Smith. I'm a process person, and I want to echo and lift up and hope you hear, Madam President, and your team, process concerns. There has been a lot of information, it has been in a short time. I know there always is that, that's our job. We always have a ton of information in a very short period of time, so this is a little bit broken record. This is some of the hazards of our work environment. And I also want to say that if decisions like this, that will have a lasting impact, positive or negative, for decades in the future, they just have such a high weight that I'm voting yes, but it's with trepidation. And I would love to see, going forward, more of this addressed, not just around the casino, but around the way that we work. I don't like seeing articles the night before a meeting calling out conflicts of interest or potential ones that we should have known already. I don't like being surprised with information, I don't like seeing new things every day. And then, I will echo Alderman Riley's sentiments, unheard of to have a meeting schedule like we had on Monday, and then to ask, like, why this deadline and why now? And other than being told, we want to finish this so that we can get onto budget, like, I get the pragmatic pieces, but I'm just saying, like, we deserve more consideration. And even if everything is above board, and all the reasons were like the complete 100% pragmatic reasons, we don't have the relationship in this council with this administration completely on these big things yet, to feel the confidence that I would like to feel in this. So I'm voting yes, it's with trepidation, it's with concerns over process, feeling like our arms are twisted a little bit, because there are good things, and this is something people have been working for decades, and seeing some really good things in this deal, right? Really good things in this deal that I think are going to be positive. And also just saying, like, I personally, from the 49th Ward, would like to see more of, more consideration given to the types of, the limb that we're being asked and our constituents are being asked to walk out on, the trust that we're being asked to give on big unknowns and on big decisions that have just the weight and impact of decades of change. I'll say that the exchange we had on Monday in casino committee, when I asked about the plans and the vision, and then hearing my colleagues who've been involved in the planning and the visioning of that area, directly contradicted what I'm hearing from the deputy mayor, is very concerning. But I am confident that we can work through it, so I'm supporting it. But I just want to put that on the record and put that out there, because I think a lot of my colleagues feel the same. We should be like full-throated, excited about this. This should be a big win and a celebration, and I'm not feeling that. And I hope that as we move forward, working on this, that we can get there. So thank you, Madam President.
Chair recognizes Alderwoman Garza.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm just rising as a point of clarification. Alderman Hopkins made mention that all of the other operators were signing a PLA wall-to-wall. That is utterly false. As chairman of workforce development, all of you know that I work very, very closely, and I eat, sleep, and breathe union. I have been in constant conversation with the Chicago Federation of Labor and every trade that's been involved with this PLA. Bally's is the only one that signed a wall-to-wall PLA, the only one, and that is the truth. So I just felt very compelled to say that, because I wanted to make sure that we know that is the truth. And a lot of us worked very hard to make sure that that happened. So thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Garza. The chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President, and good afternoon, members of the city council. I, like many of you, are very much in support of making Chicago better, of finding ways to broaden our tax base and finding ways to put people to work, many of whom are watching in the next room, those who would be those hotel workers, those who would be those casino workers, those who would be those union workers, looking forward to building and working in the first Chicago casino. But I think it's fairly safe to say that with state law and other pressures, regardless who we picked, a casino would be built with labor, would be employed by people in unions, and it would create pathways to the middle class. We are rushing today under a series of false narratives that I think are very dangerous for this body to continue to ignore. We've heard from our colleagues, who've talked about process, and I agree with them. We've heard with colleagues talked about the timelines, and I agree with them. We've heard from colleagues about some of the dual-agency representation that seems to be going on at the moment, and I agree with them too. But at the heart of all of this was something that one of my colleagues said, this is about raising money. And the notion that we were sold is that we have to do this now for two reasons. One, we need $40 million upfront payment right now, and Bally's is the one ready to do it, to save our budget. If $40 million is what's going to make or break the city of Chicago's $16 billion enterprise, we are in a world of hurt more than we know, ladies and gentlemen. We are facing a $306 million shortfall. So no matter which way it goes, we're already looking at a property tax increase to make up for the deficit that we have going into the next budget cycle. This is not going to save us from having to make that tough choice. We also were told that this would create $200 million in revenue for pensions, in 10 years, maybe. But that also discounts the facts from what the other 11 casinos have been doing in the state of Illinois. One Chicago casino apparently is going to make over $200 million, when in 2021, all 11 casinos generated $248.7 million in casino gaming revenue. 11 casinos created $248 million. But yet Chicago's is going to do that in one year. For historical purposes, in 2020, and we know what year that was, $180 million in casino gaming revenue was generated by those same 11. Before the pandemic, $377 million was generated by those 11 casinos in the state of Illinois through casino gaming revenues. But yet Chicago's singular casino is going to be the shining star that beats them all at $200 million a year. I don't believe it. We would have to be a city of gambling degenerates to make that kind of money on a daily basis, with people forking over $1,500 a day just to make those ends meet. It's not going to happen. It's not realistic. And to my colleague's point, one, what happens when the company doesn't make its earnings mark? But more importantly, what are we going to tell our taxpayers years from now, five years from now, when we have not only sold the casino, but are also still short and can't make the pension payments anyway? What are we going to tell the taxpayers of the city of Chicago when we fall short? What are we going to tell the taxpayers of the city of Chicago when we fall short because we failed in this moment to think of the long term? $40 million is what we're rushing for? $2 million a year, half of it going to various projects throughout the city, half going to public safety? That's what we're rushing for right now? This is an asset that should be able to be guaranteed to generate hundreds of millions of dollars. But we're rushing because we need a positive spin in time for 2023. That's what this is about. And I understand that we've been waiting and trying to figure this out for 30 years. We finally got the license. But we have to do this right. We have to get it right. And selling it the way we are, with no way to protect taxpayers when the projections fall short, should not be the legacy of this council, should not be the outcome of this debate, and certainly should not be what taxpayers come to expect. There is no way we will beat 11 casinos across this state at this location. Or even if we keep both locations open as a satellite to the other, we will not be able to do it. So let's be real with ourselves. Let's be real with our taxpayers, and let's not rush to do this just to grab the headline. Thank you, Madam President.
The chair recognizes Alderman Vazquez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I really appreciate our colleagues sharing really all of their opinions and their hesitation on this vote. I myself don't like casinos, period. Went to them once, lost money, never again. It's not how I roll. So when this was an opportunity, I didn't view it as such. I view it as a problem and a very real concern. But thinking about our city, thinking about our city's mismanagement of pension debt and how the parking meter deal and how the city functioned has led us to a problem where we have to find a solution is what had me at least giving it the fair opportunity of being able to debate it internally. And part of what moved me to be in support of it, because I will be in support of it, is what I've done in this council is tried my best to find opportunities where I can affect change to improve things that are already happening. So in looking at the funds that were going to be the upfront money, the $40 million, the first thing I thought is this is going to go to the corporate fund. It's not going to go to pensions when it should go to pensions. If we're talking about a city, that means what it says about trying to solve the problems we have found ourselves in due to past administrations, due to past councils, we have to make decisions to show that. So that, in negotiating through that, is what brought me along to support it. But I do share the same trepidation Alderman had in mention. I share the same concerns that Alderman Riley, that Alderman Hopkins, that Alderman Smith mentioned here, because it was a problem as far as the process. Being a vice chair of one of the committees and being put on the Casino Committee, which I voted against the formation of, was because I had concerns about the process in general. I respect in the back and forth that you had earlier, that your team had worked on it for two and a half years and put the amount of time to do so. But what didn't happen was the communication to the council that was adequate enough for us to feel any level of confidence in that. It is very often that we find out about things either because they're passed and it hits the news, or because it's a Crane's business article. And so having those concerns are very real. Now, we're in a council where we're never going to get an opportunity to make easy decisions. That's part of the nature of the job. We are given hard decisions and ones that we have to wear, ones that we have to hold in our gut as we make them. But we should be honest about the fact that this process was not one that I think the people of Chicago should have confidence in. If we are voting in support, some of us, it is because, at least for me, I understand the nature of the problem and what we need to do to at least figure out the pensions. I know that if we don't do that, we're asking the voters, we're asking the constituents, we're asking the neighbors of Chicago to then pay more in property taxes and everything else. I think that it is a problem that we were looking to make this a fast process in order to figure out our numbers for what a budget could look like. I do think it makes sense to have had more time to make that decision. But because it is something that's becoming, coming before the council now, and it's something where we have to decide, and we have to figure out a responsible way to figure out and be fiscal stewards of the city, I will be in support. But I also want to be on the record as not really being supportive of the process or how this played out. Thank you, Madam Chair.
The chair recognizes Alderman Cardenas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Trying to gather my thoughts. Now, this vote, it's about two things, the optimist and the pessimist. The pessimist will tell you all the reasons why not to do this deal, not to do Bally's, not to do a casino. You could tell me that the Fed is raising rates. You could tell me the stock market just fell right below bear territory. You could tell me that supply chain bottlenecks scare you because baby formula is not getting to you. And that's a concern. You could tell me the war in Europe has you sideways, and you don't know what to do with this decision. You could tell me the gas prices are at an all-tom high, and you can't really understand why would anybody want to invest $1.7 billion in this city? But in fact, what has happened since 2016, I would just kind of Google this stuff, there's been an apartment boom. 3,000 units have been built every year since 2016. Thousands of new people are downtown. If you don't believe me, just drive around sometimes in the evenings. There's no place to park. Congestion, it looks like nobody really cares. They find a way to get there. There's always going to be a reason why not to do something. And I ask, why Bally's wants to invest $1.7 billion in this spot, in this location? I just gave you the stats. It's where the people are at. It's where the investment is at. It's where the economic cycles are happening right now in this city. It makes sense to me. It is a long time coming. 20 years almost been here. This is a no-brainer. We knew it was going to happen. Everybody in this council should not be surprised that this is coming to a head today, right now. You knew a Chicago casino was going to happen. It went to Springfield, it came back, it went back again, they fixed it, we're here. Everything's been done, has been done. All the agreements are in place. All the reviews have been done as well. Tweakings are happening right now. We have a committee that Alderman Tony chairs that we're going to go back to in case we need to fix additional things. But this is it. Either you're an optimist or a pessimist. There's no in-between. And I am an optimist. Voting yes.
Thank you, Alderman Cardenas. Ladies and gentlemen, I think we're coming to the end of this debate. I'm going to call on Alderman Burnett and then turn it back over to Chairman Tony. Alderman Burnett.
Thank you very much, Madam President. So I rise in support of the casino. First of all, I'd like to commend Alderman Irving and Alderman Tony. And Alderman Irving articulated everything very well when he got up to speak. You know, one of the main things that interests me with this casino is the pension for our police and firemen. You know, our police and firemen put their lives on, on the line for us every day. Matter of fact, it's getting even more prevalent, just looking at the videos that we saw on State Street, how chaos is going on right in front of police right now, how young people are not afraid to shoot not only us, but police officers too. And to think if one of those officers were to lose their lives, or firemen were to lose their lives, their loved ones would probably have to rely on their pensions. I think it's important that we show them our support, that we help to keep that morale going on, that we help to encourage them to do more for us and the city by putting their lives on the line for us again and continuously by supporting their pensions, by supporting something that's been in limbo for many years, something that has been shuffled around for many years. I think it's important that we support them. But I also think it's important that we try to do everything and anything that we can to not put any more burdens on the citizens of the city of Chicago with the taxes. You know, they've been calling themselves shifting taxes around and saying that they're going down in certain areas. I haven't felt it. You know, I've, it's been going up. And, and I know a lot of folks, it's almost getting to the point where it's, it's not even worth owning property nowadays in the city of Chicago because it's, you know, everything is so, getting so expensive. Folks don't need any more burden on them. The difference in this and other things that has happened in the past, this is not taking money from anybody's pocket, except for the people who may go to the casino. But it's not taking money out of the taxpayers' pocket, you know, and they paying more taxes. This is bringing money to the city of Chicago to help us fill gaps that we have, help us fill gaps that we're going to have in the future, help us fill gaps that are, as we and some of you all were, were here with us when Daley tried to, when we all went to Springfield, who all went to Springfield, when we went to Springfield and tried to get, tried to get them not to put this unfunded mandate on us to pay the pension. We all went to Springfield, a lot of Aldermen went to Springfield to lobby the legislators, the speakers and the president to say, don't put this mandate on us because we don't know where we're going to get the money from. Now we have an opportunity to get some money. Now, will we get all of it? Who knows? But guess what? It's better than nothing. It's better than nothing. It's better than trying to get it from the taxpayers. We have to do something. Yeah, is it going to be risky? For me, it's risky. You know what I'm saying? For me, it's risky because I have some people who don't want the casino in my neighborhood. But I have to do something. I have an obligation, not only to the residents that I represent, but also to the residents of the city of Chicago. And we have to do something. And guess what? This is money that's not going to cost us anything. It may cost us some traffic, you know, who knows? Maybe a little noise, I don't know. But guess what? It's not going to cost a lot of money out of our pockets. And I tell you, you know, some of those areas over there, in our area where this thing is supposed to be at, some of those folks pay some high, they, we got athletes that live over there that get $2 million, $3 million homes. I don't think they want no more taxes, tax burdens on them over in those areas. At the same time, they're across the street from Cabrini-Green. You know, this will also bring jobs. We're talking about 6,000 good jobs to people, 6,000 union jobs. We're talking about theaters, we're talking about restaurants, we're talking about tourism that we've, we've been competing with folks for a long time. We had over 57,000 people when we were at the height of our tourism before COVID. We can go over 60 if we had a casino, and it would bring a lot of out-of-towners to the city of Chicago, not only spending their money at the casino, but spending money at restaurants, spending money at hotels, spending money for a lot of our residents. I don't know how many of you all got residents that drive Ubers and all those cars. Man, I get in the Uber all the time, found out it's one of my constituents driving them. Give all them opportunities and money to be able to do something. It'll help the arts community. It'll help everyone. This is money that's coming to us that we need to seize this moment and take this opportunity. Yeah, time is important. If we wait, then what happens? Then what happens? Then where we get the money from? Some of us may not even be here after this thing is built, about the time this thing is built. But it's something that we have to do. It's something that we have to do because this is something that the city has been trying to do for 30 years. I'm going to tell you, my mother, and I hope she don't hit me when I go home, but my mother and other women that I know, older people, they on the bus every weekend, going to Jolly At, going to Rosemont, going to all these different places, spending their money, why they can't be in the neighborhood, why they can't be in Chicago? Why they, and a lot of times, they just go there, sit at a quarter, nickel slot machine all day, just enjoy themselves, not spending a whole bunch of money, just enjoy themselves. Why they can't enjoy themselves in the city of Chicago? I'm not for, I'm not for gambling, but I know that people are going to do it, and they've been doing it for a long, long time. When we have policies and everything else, they going to do it. That's why the lottery is, is out here. We need to take advantage of this opportunity, seize the moment. I have the heart to stand up to the residents in my ward, and I'm going to do everything in my power to make, make sure things are as easy as possible and less of a burden as possible for them in our community. And I'm going to tell you, there hasn't been anything that's been built in my ward that has hurt the residents in my ward. Not one thing that has been built in my ward that has hurt residents in my ward. And I've had many things built in my 27 years. And everything that have we gotten built, even though people complain about it, at the end of the day, the complaints were gone because we make sure it's not a burden on them. So I ask all of you all, not only for me and my ward, but for the city of Chicago, not for me today, but for people for tomorrow, vote for this casino, help the people of the city of Chicago, help our police and our firemen, help their loved ones who have to be there and depend on whatever they have left if something happened to them, to be able to sustain themselves. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman Burnett. Chairman Tony, I believe that Chairman Dow would like to speak.
Thank you, Madam President. I was not planning to speak on this issue today, nor do I like following the illustrious Walter Burnett. But I just wanted to say what was on my heart. One, I don't think the process has been perfect, but no process is perfect. But I do think that we have had an opportunity to answer a lot of questions that we have. I want to say that I'm supporting this because I believe at the end of the day, we can work out the parking concerns. I believe at the end of the day, we can deal with the security concerns, and we earmark money for that. I believe that it's great to be able to provide job opportunities for people in challenged neighborhoods that will have a decent paying job, and we should support that because God knows we need more jobs in this city. And I also want to say that we have, I can speak for myself. I mean, I've talked to Jenny Bennett a number of times since called her at home in the evenings to get understandings about what was in the agreement. And I know on the revenue projections, you know, I've been asking about perhaps having the Civic Federation or some other organization do the analysis on the projections for the revenue. And while those organizations and entities are not the right ones to do that kind of review, the projections that we have are based on at least eight, six to eight independent industry experts who have looked at these numbers. So I'm comfortable with the, the projections and the numbers, and I just wanted to put that on the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Dow. Chairman Tony.
Mayor, I just wanted to highlight a few of my reasons why I am supporting the casino and the Bally's bid, and then answer a few questions, and then I want to end with a kind of a personal note about my first experience in a casino. And it all dovetails back. So as Chairman Cardenas says, we are a world-class city. We are a city that can handle and should handle We are a city that can handle and should handle the modern forms of entertainment, i.e., casinos. We have the broad shoulders, we have the police force, we have the capabilities of dealing with congestion, security, um, and all the, um, effects that casinos are gonna have on this city. So, you know, as, as Alderman Dowell said, we had numerous consultants, we left the market to determine the location, the revenues and such. This is not something that was derived out of what the city can do, it's say, "Let's get the best and brightest in the casino industry and bid for the most, one of the most lucrative markets in America." And I think that is a, a different procurement process than what we're, are used to. And I believe that the best minds have looked at Chicago, they put their best proposals forward, and through the winnowing process, we got to Bally's. And why Bally's? Well, let's put it this way, why now? If you've been listening to the committee and to Jan-, uh, Ms. Bennett and Samir, on an annual basis, we are losing just to Indiana alone, $190 million of opportunity cost just at the Indiana Casino. We have been losing that opportunity for years. And I'm, I am more than comfortable, I'll give you a couple stats about where we think this revenue is. And by the way, each of the finalists all came in with, with a conservative estimate of up in year six, not year one, that we're gonna be up to $200 million dedicated solely to police and fire, not just the 40 up front. Um, and as a person who experienced, who, uh, was here for the, uh, meter deal, probably one of the biggest mistakes we made at the meter deal was that we didn't earmark every single dime for pensions. We might be in a better place today if we lockbox that as what this legislation does, not just the 40, but the 200 million is for police and fire pensions. It's not gonna be the panacea, but it's certainly a step in the right direction. And every day that we wait, our pension liability continues to grow. Uh, the, so let me be clear. 40 million up front, $2 million annually in perpetuity for budget relief, 2 million for community benefit and/or security every year, um, in perpetuity. The, uh, you know, I, I, I wanted to mention that on this 200 million, that's hopefully by year five, six, um, and just to give a perspective to some of the comments by some of my colleagues. So it's been reported now with just the Rivers Displayne's Casino, for the past 12 months, they have generated 503 million specifically at one casino. Now, our market is much, and that's in today's dollars, our market is much more lucrative here in terms of location, location, location. So I am comfortable with the conservative projections of 200 million. Now remember, 200 million isn't just gaming revenue. If you were in the committee and looked at the reports, you've got hotel revenue, you've got parking tax revenue, you've got restaurant revenue, and you're gonna have cultural amenities. And that actually, if you look at the numbers and the charts, is probably 30% of that 200 million over the years. I, I could, I did see specifically on the real estate taxes, they're gonna go from basically vacant land to up to 30, $37 million in, in property tax alone on this property. Uh, the, so why Bally's? Bally's came in, number one, the highest upfront payment was originally 25 and went up to 40. Everyone, Bally was the leader in this whole negotiating process. They set the tone for the other candidates to follow. All of a sudden, $40 million became everyone's entry point. The second thing is, uh, and by the way, no strings attached, if this deal, if the gaming board doesn't, doesn't approve this for whatever reason, our $40 million is still in our budget for 2023. Uh, the, the second thing to remember is that Bally's, this, this is their only casino in Chicago. So there is, they are motivated to obviously generate the most amount of money. They're not trying to share between two casinos that are within the basic radius of whatever, in terms of the market, 50 to 60 miles in, in radius. So they are 100% committed to making Chicago the most profitable for us and them, which by the way, speaking of, we're not selling anything. We, the city and the state of Illinois are equity partners in this, both at 20, basically 40%, and remember, if, remember that the original RFP had a much higher tax rate and nobody was interested. That's why it was revised down to where it's at. But we are 40% owners of this. This is not like the parking meter deal. We own, we are, we also, government, has to make sure that this works for our city and for our community. We're all in this together, much unlike the, the parking meter deal. And, and also, if you were listening closely, Bally's had the number one capital investment, guaranteed investment in the site. 1.3 guaranteed, no matter what happens, this is gonna be built with that kind of budget. The, I think the second, I think the 78, their guarantee was a billion. So we've got 300 million already in additional investment and a guarantee that this is gonna happen. Who knows what's gonna happen over the next number of years? Recession, whatever. We're gonna get this done, they're committed, they've got to do that, and they had the highest, um, uh, guaranteed investment. The other thing is, as my colleague, Alderman Garza said, Bally set the tone for the labor peace agreements. Yes, I don't know exactly how, when the other candidates came on board, Bally set the tone. We know this is, uh, this is a requirement for doing business in the city of Chicago, and they certainly, um, led the way, and others followed. And that wasn't the first time, in my opinion, that they followed Bally's leadership, saying, "We want this, we want this the most. We're the most aggressive about it. We're gonna make this thing happen." Whether it was on minority hiring, you know, uh, minority ownership, and, uh, Alderman Taylor, this is probably, I believe it's 60% or more is, is guaranteed for Chicago residents, and obviously, our percentages on minorities and, uh, women-owned businesses is probably something that we have not seen in this council, uh, in terms of their commitment. So I know Alderman Irvin did a great job explaining that. So it's the why a casino, why now, and why Bally's. To answer a couple of the other, other questions that, oh, here's what I wanted to say. If those of you were listening and read the report, there's, there's a very detailed study on addiction, not only with the gaming board's requirements, but Bally's acknowledgement, and, and this is an industry that they do well, that they are going above and beyond helping those people necessarily that need it, um, that are addicted to whatever their addiction is, but in, in this case, it's gambling. So I, it has been brought up, it has been discussed. Um, the, the other thing that, when we talk about 3,000 good-paying jobs with construction or whatever, you have to look at 3,000 jobs with 3,000 individuals or families, and what they do with the money that they're making with these, uh, these amazing labor wages, they're gonna spend it in their community. The multiplier effect is of 3,000 new jobs at those kind of wages has not factored anything into this consideration of the economic impact to the city. So it's gonna be 3,000 good jobs, helping families in every neighborhood in the city of Chicago. Let me talk about a little bit about Medina. We, and I, I wanna make some comparisons in Alderman, Alderman Riley might shrug his shoulder, but there are some comparisons of what I've dealt with, with Wrigley. Now, Wrigley has been there for 100 years, but I guarantee you, Wrigley was surrounded by industrial when I first came to the neighborhood. It was not really a great residential neighborhood. Everyone knew that Wrigley was there. But that being said, that we have worked, and, and another thing that the Cubs and I actually agree on is more eyes on the street, more people in the neighborhood is going to make a safer neighborhood. And Jenny Bennett has talked about this time and again, that initially, you're gonna have just so many more people down there, and I, trust me, I have 40,000 people in a very congested neighborhood that has issues about security and parking and such. We work through it. We let Wrigley grow, and we let Lakeview grow. And it's a balancing act, it's gonna take a lot of work from Alderman Burnett, Alderman Hopkins, and Alderman Burnett, and Alderman Michelle Smith. We are going, and Alderman Riley, we are gonna make this happen. We have, we have to make it happen, and it is going to be a successful temporary and a successful, uh, permanent location if we, the elected officials, work with our community on the issues that we talked about, security, congestion, traffic and such. And by the way, there is approximately 80 million of Bally investment on traffic upgrades on the permanent site, and 80, uh, eight, this has been talked about in the committee, and 80 that will be provided with the TIF assistance. So there's a combination, if, if my, if my memory serves me correct, and I believe it is, that they are making improvements to X number of intersections, there's, the, the city is gonna be widening Chicago Avenue and the bridge and the work at Halsted and Chicago. Bally is picking up the Jefferson and Kara, uh, Erie intersection, make this thing happen. So I'm, I'm in a good place, I hope you are in a good place, and I just wanna end with a little story. Um, I'll make sure I got it. Okay. So I wanna tell, and I was, I told Mayor the story this morning, I said, you know, I, everyone has their first story of going to a casino, right? But I, I tell you, my first story of going to a casino was when I was a junior in college, and, um, a friend of mine, a fraternity brother of mine, had an opportunity to go to the Rose Bowl, tickets to go to the Rose Bowl, Michigan, USC. And, uh, I'm a twin, and my twin brother went to, went to Western, I go to Illinois, so, you know, we kind of went different ways in college, but I said, he offered me, if I wanted to bring a guest, and I said, "Well, let me go with my twin brother Kevin, we're gonna go to, we're gonna go to Pasadena." But we decided we were gonna make it a, a trip. We were gonna do, we're gonna go to San Francisco, my sister lived there, and we did, we spent three days in Sausalito, when San Francisco was a whole different place than it is today. Uh, we took a, we took a $25 flight from San Francisco to, to LA so we could go to the game, to, uh, the Pasadena game, which was, what, New Year's Eve, whatever. And our, our final leg was gonna, I decided we're gonna go to Vegas to see, I've never been to Vegas, so, anyways. So we had very little money ba-, basically, but I had prepaid the hotel rate at, at Las Vegas. So if you can imagine, three days in San Francisco, $25 flight, get to airport, uh, we actually, we got to the fraternity house at, at UCLA, uh, and then we actually hitched a ride, we hitched a ride because we had really no money. So we hitched a ride to, to stay overnight at, at the Rose Bowl, because we had no money, there was no room and such like that. So we had a great, we had a great night, and so on, on the last leg, we decide, you know, we were gonna go to Vegas. And all we had was probably between the three of us, $100, but the room was paid. So we decided, we're gonna take that $100 and we're going to the casinos. You know, I'd never been to one before, but, so my twin brother and I were playing slot machines, and we were right next to each other, and push, push, no money, no money, and we were literally down to like the last $3, but we were playing simultaneously right next to each other. And honest to God, we had no more, we had probably two more turns each, and we were out of money. And this was a day one, this wasn't even, we had three days left in, with no money. So we both, we both, at the same time, we both, we, we both, uh, played the, played the, played the machine, and we both won at the same time. Well, wait, the money was falling, it was coming out of the machine, it was like, we were both, we were on the floor, we were just hysterical about how could we win with this thing? So the, the story was that we were there for two more days, we whined and dined and, you know, we, we, we put all our money back into the casino, but we had the time of our life, and we, 300 each, something like that, yeah, yeah, but this is 78 or something like that. But, so what I wanna end, what I wanna end is, we had the time of our life, we did left all our money in Vegas, okay? How, how, yeah, no, but I just wanna say, and I just wanna put the story together, I'm not, the, the story is that we had one op, one thing we did culturally in Las Vegas, we, we went to see the Liberace Museum, you know, which was, which was at a strip mall. So I will, I'll end it like I started. Chicago has so much to offer, including with your vote, a casino today, we've got the culture, we've got opportunity for tourism and economic development that I think is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. So with that, let's go, let's go, Bally. Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Just, I, hold on, yeah, okay, you asked for, I got too, I got too excited about this. Okay, so I move passage, hold on, I move passage of SR 2022-587 and SO 2022 1316 by roll call vote.
Madam Clerk, please open the vote.
All right, voting is now open. Please vote from your device. Remember to hit refresh and cast your vote. The voting is now open. Hit refresh. Please help your colleagues next to you if they have questions, or raise your hands, and we'll bring, um, someone around to help you. The voting is now open. Please hit refresh and cast your vote.
The chair recognizes Alderman Tony.
I think we're, Alderman Sophia King would like to address the body about your recusal. She did in commit, she did in committee, she did in committee, just I wanna make sure that, that this is.
We are in the middle of a vote, but we will make this exception because I believe there's a recusal that needs to be made. Chair recognizes Alderman King.
Thank you, thank you, President, thank you, Chairman. I, I have to legally do this, and I should, but I have to recuse myself, uh, taking a Rule 14 out of an abundance of caution because my husband is a partner in a law firm, not Taft, um, that has or is representing a casino operator. So, thank you, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Alderman King.
Madam President, that was recorded at the committee level also.
Alderman David Moore, I just need your vote. Alderman David, David Moore, did you, um, did you hit the vote button? Is your device not working? I could do a voice vote.
That's all good.
Oh, he's got it? Okay. All right, the voting now is closed.
All right, the yeas are 41, the nays are seven, the matter passes. Alderman Kapelman for, on the motion for reconsideration.
Madam President, I move to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye. All, all those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The nays have it, the motion for reconsideration fails, the matter passes. I would like just, as a point of personal privilege, um, to acknowledge folks that are in the, the box, um, starting in the far left, Mike Masaleo, who's the new, uh, Chair of the Building Trades, I'm here in Chicago, Bob Ryder, well, I'll say it for you, Bob, is the proud President and CEO of the Chicago Federation of Labor that represents working men and women in the Chicagoland area. And I also have to thank Representative Bob Rita, who spearheaded the passage of the legislation that led to this moment, where the city of Chicago will get a casino after 30 years of futility. There are many, many others to thank. But gentlemen, please, I thank you on behalf of the taxpayers. Oh, and I must also thank Representative Kelly Cassidy, who was also a champion for us on the floor of the House, getting this casino bill passed. Thank you, one and all. We will have more to say in a few moments, after the conclusion of the City Council meeting. All right. We have, I believe, one other item of unfinished business. The chair recognizes Chairman Talia Farrow.
Thank you, Madam President. I've noticed up pursuant to Route 41, one item of unfinished business from the Committee on Public Safety, ordinance 2022-1596, and ordinance amending Section 8-16-020 of the Municipal Code Regarding Curfew Hours for Minors. Madam President, if I may make an opening statement and reserve a privilege of closing as well. Madam President, as I moved to this great city, back in the late 80s, early 90s, I, I couldn't help but to recall a campaign that was in the midst of happening, asking the parents of this city, do you know where your children are, or do you know where your child is? And that was a result, the direct result of, during the time, the city was experiencing over 1,100 murders a year. Gun control or illegally possessed guns, and gangs was prevalent throughout the city. And as I said, murders were topping over 1,100 every single year. And as a young police officer during that time, we enforced curfews with the hope of reducing the number of people that were murdered in the city of Chicago, particularly those that were minors. If we fast forward almost 30 years, as Chairman Tony said earlier, we call ourselves, and we say, and we, we claim, and we hold the title of being a world-class city. Madam President, I ask, how can we claim that title if we are not doing our very best to make sure that the residents of the city of Chicago are safe? To make sure that our youth, our young men and our young women are provided an opportunity that they can safely survive in or grow in? As we fast forward 30 years, we're now looking at over 800 murders a year. Gun control, or the lack of gun control is still prevalent in our streets. And we, as elected officials, have to stand up and make sure that we're doing our very best, our absolute very best, to make sure that we're providing a future for the young men and women of the city. And I support, I support this ordinance, calling for a curfew to be amended, or the curfew ordinance to be amended. This particular ordinance that's before this body today does three things. It amends the 1992 curfew ordinance to reflect 11 o'clock across the board, rather than the 10 o'clock through the weekdays and 11 o'clock on weekends. It extends the ages, extends the age to 17 from 16 years old, and exempts minors that are attending ticketed events. I think it's incumbent upon each and every one of us, as we consider this ordinance, to make sure that we're putting our best foot forward, and that we're protecting the young men and women of this city. I remember as I began to have a family, I, as a parent, used to tell my kids they had to be in the house at a certain time. That was an, that was imposing a family curfew on them. They needed to be in the house at a certain time, because as a parent, I wanted to make sure they were in the safest environment possible. And I knew if they were out at 11, 12, or 1:00 in the morning, the possibility of something happening to my own children just grew higher and higher. That rings true to my family in Chicago, the millions that are out here in the city of Chicago. The later they are out on the streets, the, the greater risk they have of having danger or harm imposed upon them. So this is just simply asking what I would do as a parent. I would make sure that my children are safe by imposing a certain time that they needed to be in the house. So sometimes we have to act as parents for the better and for the good of this city. And I know there are other methods that we have to continue to make sure that we, as a city, look to engage in. We have to continue to make sure that we are providing an adequate education for them, that we're providing opportunities for them. Those opportunities include jobs, mentoring. We have to make sure that we continue to provide these opportunities for the young men and women of the city. But at the same time, sometimes we have to be tough and say, you have to be in the house at a certain time if you're not with a parent or guardian or responsible adult. Because sometimes that's what a parent does, to make sure that his child can live to see tomorrow or the next day. Now, it pains me to say this, but this summer, we're going to have some young men and some young women that will die as a result of gun violence. Each of us know that. But what can we do today to try to prevent it as best as possible? I ask for your favorable consideration of this ordinance, simply because it's saving a life. And that one life could be the leader of this city one day. So I thank you, Madam President, for the, for the privilege of addressing the body regarding this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The chair recognizes Alderman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, there is absolutely no empirical evidence that lowering curfew times decreases crime. And as a matter of fact, across the country, the evidence indicates the opposite. We need to stop trying to prevent crime based off of hunches, and we need to do it based off of evidence. In the 80s, we had a war on crime, a war on drugs, that ended up being a war on inner-city black and brown communities. We had 500,000 people incarcerated. We now have 2.5 million, with no drops in drug usage. Folks, we need to stop playing hunches, and we need to start playing evidence and implementing best practices. Dr. Jennifer Doleak of the University of Virginia states the following: Enforcing curfew distracts police from doing the things they should be doing. And if those things were effective, then switching police attention to curfew enforcement will in fact increase crime. We need to focus our efforts on evidence-based solutions, and we need to invest in our young people. The fact is, is that we do have empirical evidence that youth jobs, that youth violence prevention programs that we are funding. I give this administration and our council credit for investing in our young people over the last several years, in our budget. That's what we should be doubling down on, not with, not with programs and initiatives that lack evidence. The fact is, this is a reaction to something that happened at the Bean, by the way, at 7:00 PM. Where we have shootings and murders in our communities every day, we need to be focused on bringing resources to the neighborhoods that need them. This is not that effort, and I urge my colleagues to vote no on this. I'm proud that over 2/3 of the Progressive Caucus will be voting against this, and I urge others to join us in that effort. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Alderman Rodriguez. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Had.
Thank you, Madam President. I too urge my colleagues to vote against this respectfully. Chairman Talia Farrow, I really appreciated a lot of your comments, and the, the care and the concern, I think is something that we all share. I'm not a parent, but I've got a couple. And the government cannot replace parents. The Chicago Police Department stepping in to enforce curfew and some kind of parental mindset, like, you know, my parents talk about different relationships that they had in Detroit and Columbus cities they grew up in, and maybe like, way back in the day or during some other time, or in some smaller community, you could ask your officer friendly to step in in some kind of parental role. But it, this is not our reality. Government are not parents. This is not going to work. It's not going to change anything. And as a matter of fact, I feel like it's continually drawing a new line in the sand to challenge young people who don't feel like we listen to them, who don't feel like we respect them, who are doing what young people do in rebelling, and who have been just divested for, for decades, our systems, our schools, our programs here. Like, we're, we're killing our young people. We're killing our young people. And I know we're trying to turn that around and change it, but this is just saying, I dare you. I dare you to break another rule. Let's put up fences around Millennium Park. I dare you to jump that fence. Like, it's ineffective. My colleague spoke to the data, I'll speak to just the feeling. You guys know this isn't going to work. We spoke to it, about it in Public Safety Committee. Spending our time doing this is disrespectful. We should be spending our time continuing to double down on our efforts, our violence prevention programs. Young people are asking us to sign on to this peacebook ordinance. They've got solutions that they want us to implement. Why can't we spend time on that, instead of turning things around in circles to come up with some like, old, proven ineffective policies that just doesn't mean anything? It means nothing. And to give it a vote and an approval just to feel like you're doing something is a waste of everyone's time, to slap in the face to people who are really trying to do something, and it's telling our young people that we are out of touch, we have no idea what to do with them, so let's just do something. Let's also privilege kids with money who can buy ticketed events and say, well, you can be here. But guess what? Kids from Rogers Park who can't afford Lollapalooza tickets, you don't get to be down here. There are so many things wrong with this, even though I understand the care and concern and the fear that we have. And for those of you who are parents, the concern and care, I believe, from you is so sincere and real, but we're bringing you other solutions. Check out the peacebook ordinance. Check it out. We've got other things that we can do. Vote no against this. Show the youth in Chicago that you're listening to them. They've had demonstrations here this week. They've told you why this is harmful to them. They've told us. Be responsive. Take that first step. Be a better legislator. Be a better representative. Be a better neighbor for your youth in Chicago and be a role model. Vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman. The chair recognizes Alderman Moore, who's now not in the chamber. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Rodriguez Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam President. We left some documents in your, in your desks, so if you haven't been able to read about this, please do. Before you vote, I, I really urge us to work on passing legislation that is evidence-based, particularly as it pertains to taking care of our young people. We have shared with you probably three different studies that say that curfews do not work. We should definitely be spending time discussing things that do work. And I want to paint a picture for you. Last week, at Roosevelt High School, they had a festival, and the young people in the school came out, and they played, and they danced, and there was a DJ, and there was food. And at the end of the day, also, the Alliance of Local Service Organizations showed up with this big truck that had video game stations inside, and hot meals, and the kids lost their mind, and they were so happy, and they were in a space that were safe for us. It was a space that was safe for all of them. And you could see the joy, and you could see how important it was for them to be able to be together in a space where they were protected, with adults that were invested in their well-being. This is not what we are proposing today. We are saying that young people are going to have a curfew, and they cannot come out. I had so many students, when I worked in Humboldt Park, that didn't even have a home. They didn't have a family. They didn't have responsible adults in their lives that could actually prevent them from going anywhere. What we are doing today is wrong. And I really need you to look at the evidence. Let's, please, please, let's study a little bit more and not do things as a reaction. Because this is not how we should be legislating. We have shared with you the data. We have shared with you the evidence. Please do not pass this today. Please vote no. And let's work on options that are actually going to keep our young people safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman. The chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
What's interesting for me, when I got in here, I was a yes on this. But one of the things I've always said, I believe in giving young people a voice and a seat at the table. The other day, we were always trying to tell young people to get involved. And I think it was on the news where y'all, young people came down. Then I was skeptical about who brought them down and why. And, but I heard their voices. And then I got two young men in the back that I mentor, one black, one Latino, and I've talked with them. And they said, Alderman, no, this is, one of them saying, hey, I feel that you should not vote no, because I don't think it's going to be effective, because, and he lives in Chicago West Lawn, and says that I believe that young people in Rogers Park are not going to be targeted, but young men, black and brown, in West Lawn and Inglewood are going to be targeted. And then they put something together for me, and this is what was critical. I think I heard somebody say, for the young person who got on Facebook or whatever, they're probably not on Facebook, they're probably on Snapchat or something, Twitter, and got all these people down here, whether it's at Millennium or anywhere else, and said, and we said, well, let's find these people and hold them responsible. Well, why wouldn't we find these young men and bring them on the youth council and say, okay, you got this type of power to get people, and young people, just meeting up at Millennium Park or anywhere else, how can we use your voice in a constructive manner to how we, so we can give a safe space for young people, using CPD as a partner, using CPS as a partner? And so let's hear these voices of these young people. If we're not including them in the process and letting their voices be heard, I think that, I think that's an issue. And so I have to respect that. I can't just say it with my mouth. I got to do it with action, when I say we have to give our young people a voice and a seat at the table. And, and, and so I want to make sure that before we move on this step, that we bring them to the table. What are some options? What are some alternatives? Using Jaden Chow at CPS, using all of our resources, so that we can identify safe spaces, but not let's dictate it to them. Let's bring them to the table to, to listen and hear their voices. I think somebody said earlier, I think it was Alder Michael Scott, be slow to speak, quick to listen, and slow to anger. I think we need to. I think we need to listen to these young people, because they, I think they have a voice, and we haven't done that. And so for that, I'm going to have to say I have to vote no today, because I got to listen to my young people. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Moore. The Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you again, Madam President, and again, good afternoon, members of the City We've talked a lot about what works and what doesn't. A tool that we don't use doesn't work. Over the last five years, we have seen an 80% drop in enforcement in curfew in the city of Chicago. From the high point in 2018 of 2,453 to last year, where only 364 individuals were cited for violating curfew, barely one a day. This ordinance, as many of my colleagues have said, doesn't address the issues of family, doesn't address the issues of what's going on in the communities, as some of my colleagues said during the committee. All this does is escalate tensions between our youth, our city, and our police officers. The same escalated tensions that this administration, this police department, says that they need to de-escalate. So we are going to force them into a situation where people are already angry, where people are already tense, where people are already at 10, and then tell our officers, now bring them down to two, and tell them to go home. I love my officers, but I'm not going to tell them to go try and do an impossible situation that's going to imperil their lives and the lives of the youth that we're trying to deal with. And it's not just the youth. As we saw the second day after the executive order was issued, the first Thursday of enforcement, when someone was asked to go through a metal detector at Grant Park and started shooting at the individual, asking him to go through the metal detector. This is not the way. Everyone in here says we got to do something. Let's dust off the ordinances that have been sitting in committees for 300 days now, holding parents accountable, having discussions about what we can do forward, having discussions about what we could do with federal funds to get people the programs, the help, the assistance they need, so that they don't feel bored and tense, so that they feel that they have to take it out on the city that doesn't love them. Let's have those discussions. But no, we're not. One incident, as one of my colleagues said, brings us here today. We're not here because of the first mass shooting, second mass shooting, third mass shooting, or fourth mass shooting in the city this month. We're here because a young man was shot at the beam. There was no outcry for the shooting at 48th and Ada, where gang bangers shot at another, but the video of a sixth or seventh grader with his backpack on dodging bullets and dust going around his head as he's fleeing for his life. There's nothing in here today about that. There's no call to arms to address that. But we're here for a curfew. We're here once again for the headline. 219 murders, we were told this morning by the rabbi. There should be more thoughtfulness to what's going on with the victims and what's causing people to get to this point. There should be more interest in why our families are failing, their children, and they're failing because they, as parents today, were never taught how to be parents from the parents that they had yesterday. We have to show people how to be parents again if we want them to raise children that will be respectful of this city and know how to handle themselves, no matter what neighborhood they go to. Lastly, there's one thing that stuck out to me and still burns my craw from that hearing on this issue. We are talking about moving the time, changing the ages, but the one thing the police department said is, we will not enforce. They told us that in the hearing. We will not enforce curfew. We'll lock them up, we'll take them down, but we won't cite. Why? What does that accomplish? All that does is now open us up to more conversations about whether or not the police's judgment is right in putting people in the back of that car. All that does is cause more anger and animosity in neighborhoods that are already dealing with unresolved issues that we have yet to address through our consent decree. Having our own police department look us dead in the eye and say, they will not enforce these changes, but yet here we are rushing to do them, sets the police department up for failure, because we're going to be looking for a scapegoat in six months when nothing has changed. If nothing will change, why are you doing this? If you won't enforce what you got, why are we moving to change it and make it even more strict? We can do better, and I'm going to join my other colleagues in saying no, because this city should come up with better solutions than the one we're presented with today. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Sixchel Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And today, when we started the council meeting, we started in prayer. Today has been a very emotional day across the country and here in Chicago, when we see mass shootings affecting most vulnerable communities, when we see another 13-year-old boy killed in the streets. We have a responsibility to look at the research, as we have seen in multiple locations in other cities. In Washington DC, the research is very clear. The curfew only made matters worse, increased crime by almost 150%. But yet we think that this kind of policies will continue. To do what? The exact same thing that we've seen time after time. And our communities are suffering. That's what we're asking, for help, for investment, treatment of trauma, mental health, the peacebook. The proposals are there. Just last year, during the summer, in June 2021, we had a hearing where we brought experts of the field to discuss about the needs of the quality of life for the most vulnerable communities in the city of Chicago. But as other colleagues have said, where is the follow-up? When do we take these issues? By heart, as is our own children, our own families who are in despair? This policy will do nothing but make matters worse for the most vulnerable. And I hope that we recommit, as we said in the beginning, to really working together, because that's not what we have seen. In our communities, we used to have bowling alleys. We used to have activities in apart districts. The pandemic took a lot of that away, and a lot of it has not come back. We're not going to get out of this, we're not going to police or we're out of this But know that the consequences will be felt in our communities, in the South Side, on the West Side of the city. The suffering is very real. Desperation, despair is what we have in our communities. Food insecurity, unemployment, parents who worked two or three jobs just to make ends meet. To my colleagues, think about your communities. Who do we represent? The option here is to fail yet again, or most vulnerable, or take decisive action in the multiple hearings that we have had. The options are at the table, but we cannot continue this route. There must be a decisive change. We hear the administration talk about getting to the root causes. Then let's invest in the root causes. This is the time where we, as a council, have an opportunity to strike this down and really recommit to strategies that work. The responsibility is within our hands in each vote, and I urge you to think about those communities in the South and the West Side. We have lost too many, and we have an opportunity today to change that. So I hope, and there's a call also for Mayor Leifert, to really recommit, to rethink spaces, to create recreational opportunities for our kids. Let them be kids. And let's talk about what we can do. The resources are here. That's the tragedy of all that. The federal funds are here. Our priorities are broken. And I hope that today we can make a real change, because being very sad throughout the day, how do we start and how we end? Because there's a difference between talking the talk and actually walking the walk with our communities. So my vote will be no, and to look into our communities and what we can do to invest in our communities and give us a real chance. Let the kids be kids.
We have three more who have asked to speak. I would like to afford them the courtesy of that. And Kappelman, sorry, we'll go forward. All right, last call, folks, for people that want to speak. Irvin. All right. The Chair recognizes Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Colleagues, I've had a very heavy heart all day, because this morning when I woke up, as many of you also experienced, I was greeted by the picture of 19 children who lost their lives in Texas, 19 children who were senselessly gunned down, two adults, 21 people. It's something that happens all too common in the United States of America, gun violence that claims our children's lives. Governor Abbott today in Texas, as he talked about this incident, spoke of Chicago, spoke of the gun violence that we experience here on a nightly basis, as bullets take dreams, take lives. We wanted to stop. We wanted to stop in Texas. We wanted to stop on the South Side of Chicago. We want our children to live. Our children want to live. I think today of my friend who has a young child in school in Chicago, who told me that his son today told him that he wishes he could take pepper spray to school to defend This isn't how our children should be growing up. This isn't how our children should be losing their lives. So I'm getting emotional today, because I know that we all want to act in the best interests of our children. I know that this ordinance was not submitted with bad intentions. I know no one in this body has ever submitted an ordinance with the intention of increasing gun violence, of increasing crime. But when we look at the evidence, the evidence that's been distributed to you via email, the evidence that's been distributed to you at your desks today, it's clear. Expanding teen curfew leads to an increase in gun violence. A vote for this ordinance, the evidence shows, is a vote to increase gun violence. A vote for this ordinance is a vote to increase gun violence. We need the gun violence to stop. We need to do everything that we can to keep our children alive. And so I implore you to listen to the professors who have studied this. I implore you to listen to the organizations who have compiled decades of research and to do the right thing. Vote no. Thank you.
Alderman, the Chair recognizes Alderwoman Metz.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise in support of this ordinance, and I'll tell you why. We can't determine what would happen to our children. Our job is to be a parent. When parents stand up, when families stand up together and take care of the children, then it's adamant that you know where your children's at all the time. Coming out of the pandemic, we see the tension even in adults. Now, what do you think about the children? If you can do one little thing to help them to stay safe, that one hour might just help. It certainly can't hurt, because they're going to do what they're going to do, day, night, anytime. But are we going to just argue about the time that the curfew? It ain't going to kill no one? What's the problem? Curfew is not going to kill the kids. And first of all, adults need to be adults and let, you the adult, not the child. The child don't tell you, you tell the child. From what I was raised, if I'm going to listen to my children, let them go out there and get the job and work and take care of the bills and pay the bills. Otherwise, you're going to abide by rules. And one of the rules is, I need to know where you at, and you need to be in the house at a certain time. You all, the kids have gotten out of control anyway. They ain't just got here. This little ordinance is not going to kill anyone. They've been doing stuff all along. We can't save everyone, but if we can try. And it appalls me, and it makes me angry to hear adults trying to defend behavior. It ain't killing the kids. It's going to help them. Let them be at the house doing something constructive. Okay, you got a time. What's wrong with that? What I can't do today, I'll do it tomorrow. Look, we got to get through this, and it's certainly not helping us by siding with the kids and the kids to encourage them. That's what I say, encouraging them to do wrong. And that ain't right. It's not right. If anything, you ain't going to help this situation, don't hinder the situation. Too bad you wasn't coming up on my parents. Spare the rod, spoil the child. Spare the rod, spoil the child. What you mean? Well, they not tell me, because I didn't want it to be spoiled, and I didn't want them to spare no rod, because I didn't want the rod. And everybody know what that is, whatever they could get their hand on. Parents better start being parents. If you love your children, sometimes you can't predict everything in life what's going to happen. You just can't. But at least you can benefit your best, is when you don't even try to do nothing to know where your children at, and you somewhere else doing something else. Well, somebody got to be responsible. That's an adult responsibility, all day long, 24/7, 365 days a year. It's their responsibility. Madam Chairman, it ain't the perfect, and I'll tell it, I've said it's not perfect, but it's a start. Right here and right now, where we at? I'm supporting the ordinance.
Thank you, Alderwoman Metz. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Austin.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise to be associated with this resolution, and I've heard many of them speaking against it, some that have children, some that do not. I think that since I've been in this council for the last 30 years, I think I got the most. And I raise mine, just like Emma said. Spare the rod, spoil the child. None of my kids are spoiled, because I never spared the rod. But if you, the parent, are not governing your children, then the curfew should be put on you. You the one that's allowing your child to rampage our city. You should be the one that's called to the carpet, because it's your responsibility for your kids. Like I said, I got seven, and I'm going to tell the rest of them, I got 29 grandkids, got 24 great-grandsons. I got twenty-nine grandkids, got twenty-four great-grandsons now. Let one of them try that with me. If I call and say, where you at, you better tell me so as I need to know where you at. Because if something jump off, I need to know whether you was there or not. Why you didn't know where your children were at? So now by us having a curfew, ooh, I think the curfew been in fact for longer than today. Much longer than today. Because I use that same curfew for mine. So I don't know what everybody's in uproar. I see no way in the world that a curfew going to bring more killing. I don't see how that's going to happen. They were going to do it in the first place, but if we teach them differently, then there'll have to be no kid, why your kid got a gun? How come you ain't checking the house? Why you not checking their clothes? Man couldn't bring a bubble gum wrapper in there without me knowing it. So it should be on the parent, not on the government. But government should be able to offer them some safe havens. The safe havens in our communities are just about gone. We need to start investing in those so our kids have somewhere to go. How come there can't be a Lollapalooza in the, what is that thing that stores it feel? We need to offer them something. You can't just say, sit down and shut up and don't offer them any alternatives. I'm supporting it, Mayor, but I do want to see some things done differently. Spazaro is head of special events. Invent some things for them kids. Help them go somewhere else so that they're not taking over our downtown area, our most prized possession. That's what we need to be doing. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Austin. The Chair recognizes Alderman Kappelman.
Thank you, Madam President. I will admit, this was a very difficult decision for me. I was going back and forth all the time, even in the last few days. I'm a former social worker, and I was specially trained to assess children for neglect and abuse. So my focus has been on protecting children. And I have come across children who are experiencing all kinds of difficulty and behavioral disorders. And as a therapist, my focus was not on providing therapy to that child. My focus was providing therapy to the family system, especially the parents. Because the parents are the providers, protectors, and nurturers of their children. As a social worker, I also lived and breathed evidence-based best practices. Because that gives us the facts that we need to direct our course of action. The Justice Lab and the Brookings Institute spoke to the curfew having unintended consequences of causing more crime because it was their belief, quote, "Having people around helps deter crime by increasing the likelihood that offender will get caught." However, there's a problem with that reasoning. The curfew is not for adults, it's for minors. Adults are still around after ten PM. We have heard from youth, many, many youth, that they do not want this curfew in place. I want to hear from parents, who are the providers, protectors, and nurturers of their children. Last week, I witnessed a situation of a parent interaction with a child. This child was around three years of age. The parent was walking her child on the sidewalk, and I was right behind that child going to work. And this child was about three years of age. This child fell, and the mother grabbed the child's arm, yanked the child up, yelled at the child, and spanked the child for falling. That was inappropriate, but the thing that concerned me the most, the red flag I saw, was that that three-year-old had no reaction. That's not normal behavior for a three-year-old to be spanked, yelled at, and not have any response. This three-year-old could be going in the direction of not trusting authority figures. And that means that child could also grow up not trusting other authority figures like police, like teachers, like their ministers, like their neighbors. And that's a concern. This discussion that we're having is really, and I'm glad we're having it, but it really underlies a more serious concern. And that is, we need to provide more support for parents who are struggling. Because I'm going to bet this mother who spanked her three-year-old for falling, I'm going to bet that she has some underlying unresolved issues and it's just passing on to generation, to generation, to generation. Now, there's one thing, Mayor, that, well, there's many things that you've done, but there's one thing I really liked that you did a couple of years ago. And that was, a number of different hospitals, when a child is born, a nurse practitioner goes out to that home, steps inside that home, and assesses the mom and the child and the family. And if there are red flags that that is not conducive for raising that child, interventions are provided. That's what we need. That's what those children need, that's what those children deserve. So this ordinance is not perfect, but it is one tiny step to many other steps that we need to do to not just support the children, but to support the parents. Thank you, Madam President.
Alderman Kappelman. I would ask, because I know some members of the body have to leave. There are a few more that have asked to speak. I would just ask you to keep your comments to a minimum out of respect for the members that need to leave because they've got obligations outside of the space. So what I There's, we have five more members that have asked to speak. All right, I'm hearing requests for a roll call vote. I've had, it's never a quest now for a roll call vote. I think we've got to call the roll. One moment, sir. Folks, out of deference to the remaining people who have raised their hand to speak, I'm going to ask you to please keep your votes, keep your comments short, and then we will have a roll call vote. I'd like to get that done in the next few minutes because I know there are a number of members that need to leave. So, we have, this is the final list. Taylor, Irvin, Vasquez, Spazaro, Curtis, that's all. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Taylor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First and foremost, young people would not be downtown if they were, communities were invested in. I don't have a skating rink, I don't have a Chuck E. Cheese, I don't have anything for young people to do. And so they wouldn't be downtown if we invested in them. But I want you all to remember that young people are the people who've changed this country. What if Martin Luther King had a curfew? Like, that is just, it starts at a curfew, and then what is the next? And all of this notion about parents? I work eighty hours a week. How am I home? The community helped me get here. We need to get back to community. You know, what pisses me off about this country is we wait till something dramatic happen, and then we blame the young people that we didn't invest in. Some of y'all remind me of the axe that wanted to represent the tree. You, the tree, the axe begged to represent the tree because they made of the same thing. But at the end of the day, the axes are still cutting the tree. And so we need to invest in young people, not punish them. And the thought that we wouldn't invest in communities, but we going to protect downtown, says something about this city council. There are so many things that we can do. This is not the answer. And parents do need help. We've been in a global pandemic for three years, and the things that we need and count on, they're not happening. CPS is cutting the budget. A scandal at the Park District got people not even wanting to work there, but we ain't going to talk about that. We all talk about punishing the people who expect us to take care of them. This is young people crying out, saying to the city council and to the United States, invest in us. Everybody in my office is younger than me, and that's intentional. Because I can't begin to say about what young people need now, because I don't know. But at the end of the day, it starts with something as small as a curfew, then is it what? CPS needs to not cut budgets. The Park District, no, don't do that. Because at the end of the day, we sit here, we talk about everything that's important to everybody else and not to me. I'm a mother with five kids, and I wouldn't dare put a restraint on them. I know where they are. I know where they been, but I've had people to help me do that. And the thought that we're doing this to protect certain folks' interests, because let's remember, the kids that were shown on TV look like me. And so let's not do this. We got the peace book, we got other things in the city that we can be doing. And it is not punish young people and their parents, it's called invest in them. Thank you, Madam Chair. I hope that was short.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Madam President. This is interesting, so let's break this down. Our conversation today is about a curfew that exists five days a week and that we adjust for two days. We're talking about two hours. Now, I 100% agree with everything in a global sense that has been said, especially what Chairman Austin has stated about the need for activities in the communities. We understand that our young people are going downtown because they feel that there's not enough to do in the neighborhood. That is an indictment on all of us, that we need to create, as she said, with Alderman Spazaro's help, more activities for our young people. We talked about the app that can be used. We need to make sure that our young people are aware of it and understand it. But I will say this. Ten PM. I'm going to say something, this was an old saying, and this comes from my grandmother. Nothing's open after ten but legs and liquor stores. It was what was said to folks. The moral of that story was that it was time to be in the house. It was time to be in the house. The street light, the other things, but it was time to be in the house. And we need to really understand that we have to set some sense of order. And again, I understand that people want to do whatever it is that they want to do, but that's not how life is. We've got to set some standards. And if the standard on Monday is ten, the standard on Friday and Saturday also can be ten. And so I think we need to think about that, but we also must do some of the other things as well, which is to invest more resources in the neighborhoods for these young folks. And so be it the peace book, be it Paint the Town Orange, all of these different ideas that are at the table need to have a place to come to fruition so that we can create the spaces our young people need in their respective communities so that they don't feel that they're not invested in, so that at ten o'clock, when it's time to go in the house, you'll be thoroughly exhausted so that you will go home and go to sleep. So again, I think that we need to work on this and also work on the other items that have been stated so that we can provide a better community for our young folks. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Irvin. The Chair recognizes Alderman Vasquez. Please, briefly.
Be brief. I can't be quick. This isn't the casino process. I apologize. Yeah. So I'm baffled because I know we've been here in suits and ties for so long. A lot of people here forgot they were youth. We talk about saving our future, we don't even listen to our future. Every single person I spoke to today, today, I talked to all the council members that I could have colored, and I go, walk me through your interactions with police. I couldn't get one positive interaction. Everyone had a story about they got pulled over and how they all had problems and how I almost got away for Yeah, the ones that I spoke to, yes, yes, absolutely. That's what I said. Right. I'm sure they would have let you go rock on by, Nick. So I'll tell you my story. I'll tell you my story. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I appreciate, I appreciate members need to leave. They can, they're the yes votes, they can walk on home. Now, I want to talk about my experience because we've heard about evidence. We've heard about people that came to Chicago. I was born and raised in this city. And my experience is the one that I speak from and why I feel the way I do in committee, why I feel the way I do now. Growing up, nobody spared the rod in my home. I could have been the sixth ward Alderman with much rod I was getting at home. I got scarred still from being raised that way. My parents were by the church. My curfew when I was young was three o'clock. I couldn't go outside. Once I turned fifteen, I shot out like a cannon because curfews don't work. What they do is they force people to go even further. All this does is it criminalizes children of color and further segregates our city. Because no one's going to downtown when you've got public transportation deserts and then you have to race back home. So you tell me what happens when you've got a child who works downtown, who the store closes at nine, they got to clean until nine forty-five. Now you've got fifteen minutes to get back home, hoping you don't get pulled over. So when I was in Navy Pier in Grant Park as a youth, every weekend, police would kick us out, every single weekend. You know they didn't kick out?
White people.
Damn right. Thank you, Nick, you got that one right. Every single time, every single weekend. And here's the thing, this is not even proactive. It's not putting our very best, it's putting up BS. It is not us moving forward, we're moving backwards so fast, we should be moonwalking. In the eighties, nineties, two thousands, two thousand teens, two thousand twenties, every single time, it's this tough on crime talk by people who won't solve the problem but want to say things to people who are justifiably scared because it is dangerous out there for some. But this doesn't solve it at all. This is actually just indicative of a failure of planning. We have police officers out there who work twelve hours, who have to work days off, right? And now we're saying, you know what, on top of that, we want you watching everybody at ten o'clock. We want you to respond when a parent or anybody else sees three kids at a park because we need them there, which then sends officers over to a park rather than being where they need to be. All this is is reactive and a headline. Yes, I will continue. Thank you, Mayor. So if it was about proactive, we could have had a meeting, a committee meeting in the first quarter to talk about what we're doing in the summer. We wouldn't have to be reactive because Alderman Lopez decided to put forth a special meeting. This is theater, and you all know better. You all, what, we have, this year in this term, we had twelve officers walk into somebody's house and they were naked. None of those officers got fired. So I know that people say it's better, it's not going to kill a kid, it will. Because what happens when an officer goes to a person of color and says, hey, kid, bring me your ID? It's going to be a positive interaction? Or are they going to react with the tension we all feel because we are under trauma? So watch when we lose kids on the other side. We got $200 million of pension money coming in because casinos, we're going to lose $400 million on police misconduct settlements. It's not right. You all know better. Thank you, Madam Chair. Now I'm finished.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Spazaro.
Calm down? Really? Really? Okay. Well, okay. Well, there were some tough acts to follow, but that's certainly not a tough one to follow, I'll tell you that, so. Anyways, I didn't plan on speaking, but I just, I'll be very brief, unlike everybody else here, you have to be brief. I promise I'll be brief. If this saves, we hear this all the time, if this saves one life, it was worth it. So I'm not sure. Unfortunately, parents have to learn to be parents. That's what some of my colleagues that are a bit older than me had said about kids. Parents need to be parents, okay? You need to let them know. We don't have a problem with, we have a problem with violence, period, in this city, in this world. I'm sorry, not this city, in this world. It's not just gun violence all over. If one kid is spared, one life, we will never know, I'm willing to take that chance by pushing pushing curfew up one stinking hour, that's it. So, maybe back in our day, some of us, you remember at 10:30, come on TV, it's 10:30 to the parents, you know where your kids are, are your parents home, so, they'd have to be home. So, with that, I just want to say, I support this, I don't know if it's a great idea, a bad idea, but it's an idea that I feel confident that'll save some good kids, I don't know if it'll save bad kids, bad kids will be out there, because bad parents allow them to be out there. So, I tell my kids all the time, I have kids also, everybody, my kids are 37 and 39. You know what I tell them? Kind of what you said, Jason, nothing good happens after midnight, okay? So, nothing good happens after 10:00 for some kids, nothing good happens after midnight for a 37 or a 39-year-old. So, with that, I just want to say, I support this, it's worth a shot. If it doesn't work, we can change it, plain and simple. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, sir. Last one. Chair recognizes Alderman Curtis.
Thank you, Madam President. Parents are not the same parents that we grew up with. Most parents, most parents want to be their child's friends. I heard one sheriff say, if you don't tend, if you don't tend to your children now, I'll tend to them later. I live in a great neighborhood, I have low crime rate, my schools are good, but every weekend, I have to deal, there's a dark web, and I don't know how many people know this, that's taking our kids and telling them exactly what to do. If you don't believe me, anytime during the weekend, starting at 9:00 o'clock, come to the southwest side. They're over at Morgan Park Parking Lot High School, they're over at Ford City, burning tires, crashing cars. When the police helicopters turn their lights on the kids, and I'm talking about 13 to 16, 17, I know these kids. They're in my schools, they're in my neighborhood. The kids turn around, take their phones, and put the lights out, and the lights right back on the helicopters. It don't make any sense at all. These kids are going down a dark path, and the parents don't know where they are. So, again, I wasn't going to get up and talk, but that's the problem that I'm having, it's not about a downtown issue at all. So, I support this wholeheartedly. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Curtis. Chairman Telly Pharoah, if you indulge me briefly, if you indulge me briefly.
Thank you.
Folks, listening to this debate is, is in some ways mystifying. A curfew has been on the books in the city of Chicago since 1992. 1992. So, we're not starting with a blank piece of paper, we're tweaking what already exists. Changing and making it uniform across every single day, a 10:00 o'clock curfew, not just for some, not just on the, during the weekday, but across, one hour. It's not Armageddon, and with, with due respect, it's offensive and wrong and, and demonstrably false to say that these modest changes are going to increase gun violence. That's just nonsensical. That's nonsensical, sir. This is not about just what happened downtown, it's about what our communities are facing all over the city. This is a constant conversation that I'm having with many of you, particularly those on the south and the west side. That these large gatherings, that unfortunately have become magnets for shootings, are a serious challenge for everyone across our city. What I've also heard over the course of this week is a lot of young parents didn't even know that there was a curfew. So, we're actually giving them a tool that they can use to help enforce the rules. And many of you have told me, for a long time in the city of Chicago, 10:00 o'clock, every media outlet, it's 10:00 o'clock, do you know where your children are? So, we're actually following a tradition that was established. Some people have brought up the issues of CPD. First of all, folks, CPD enforces the curfew now, but they enforce the curfew not by arresting folks, some, some people apparently want arrest numbers of our young people. They want paddy wagons drawing up and just putting people in, our young people in cuffs, that's not what this can be about. In an opera, in an, in an era where we are trying to enforce constitutional policing, we are trying to get our police officers to be even more respectful of members of the community, you know what they do? What they do is they say, hey, it's curfew, you better get along home. And the vast majority of our young people, when that, those words are spoken to them, say, okay, I'm on my way. Somebody said, well, this, this is going to be for rich people on the north side, that those kids are going to be able to buy a ticket to fancy events. No, no, no. If you read the ordinance, what it says is ticketed or sponsored events. What is happening, and has been happening, and will increase exponentially over the course of summer, is faith community, community organizations. A lot of other folks who care about young people and are creating safe spaces are going to have events at night precisely for the reasons that many of you have said. And we ought to give them an opportunity to be able to do that, and for the young people who want to attend, to be able to attend it without being in violation of the curfew. And one more change, earth-shattering apparently, is we're changing the ages from 16 to 17. Folks, we need tools to help us address these issues. Not one tool will be the panacea that solves all problems. But I also want to remind you, those of you who are saying, we ought to be investing in this, we ought to be investing in that, did you forget what budget you passed last year? $1.2 billion of investments, vast majority of which are focused on strengthening the families, and yes, Alderman Kappelman, we're scaling up that program, so that we go to into more families at the earliest possible stage, and make sure that we're doing everything that we can to support them. A vast majority of the money that's going into our neighborhoods is for youth employment and youth engagement. And if you haven't downloaded the MyShineMyFuture app, please do so, because what you're going to see is there are hundreds of events every week all across our city for young people to do. But what I've also heard is from parents, to answer Alderman Kappelman's question, is we didn't know there was a curfew. We think this is a good idea, and this is supported by our police. For me, simple, straightforward, yes, there are all kinds of other things that we should be doing, that, that this council should be engaged in, but I also don't want you to dismiss the work of hundreds of organizations across our city that every single day are engaged with our young people, engaged with our families, and they support this change, because they know how hard it is, how, how much parents are struggling in this time. And some bright lines and some rules will help them, help the parents, and help our city. So, I strongly urge your favorable support of this ordinance. Back to you, Chairman Telly Pharoah. May we have a vote?
Thank you, Madam President. For the sake of time, I, I do want to wave any closing, but I, I do want to say that we have, as a city, in the Park District, invested $110 additional million dollars, $45 million invested this year in Community Safety Initiative, $10 million invested in youth diversion and deflection programs, and millions of dollars invested in One Summer Chicago. And I agree with all of my colleagues that that's just the beginning. I mean, we should do more, and we have to do more. Madam President, with that being said, I move the passage of this item by a roll call vote.
The voting is now open. Please vote from your device, remember to hit refresh and cast your vote, hit refresh and cast your vote. If you are having device issues, please raise your hands.
If you're having difficulties, please raise your hand, clerk staff will come and help
I am now going to call on those aldermen who have not cast their vote electronically, so please cast your vote. Alderman Laspada, Alderman Hopkins, oh, Alderman Hopkins, you came in. Alderman Riley. Did it cast? Okay. And Alderman Silverstein, did yours come through? Okay, Alderman Silverstein is in. The voting is now closed.
Voting is now closed, the ayes are 30, the nays are 19, the matter passes. Alderman Kappelman on a motion for reconsideration.
Madam President, I move to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
No.
The nays have it, the motion for reconsideration fails. Chairman Telly Pharoah, does that conclude your, the unfinished business?
Madam President, that concludes my report.
Mitchell, any other unfinished business that you're aware of?
Madam President, I'm not aware of any unfinished business.
Okay. Next up, miscellaneous business. Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I'm not aware of any miscellaneous business.
Date and time of the next meeting.
I've handed up to the, to the clerk and the ordinance, setting the date and time for the next meeting.
Madam Clerk, can you please read the ordinance?
Don't worry, it's not next week, y'all, we have a break. Section 1, the next regular meeting of the City Council of the city of Chicago shall be on Wednesday, June 22nd, 2022, beginning at 10:00 AM in the council chamber on the second floor and City Hall, 121 North LaSalle Street, Chicago, Illinois. If prior to then, there is a determination accordance with Section 70 of the Open Meetings Act, that an in-person meeting is not practical or prudent due to COVID-19, the next regular meeting of the City Council may be conducted by video conference in accordance with applicable law. Any such determination will be posted on the city clerk's website, along with amended meeting agenda, indicating that the meeting will be conducted by video conference by 10:00 AM on Friday, June 17th, 2022. The ordinance shall take effect and be enforced here and after its passage.
Madam President, I move passage in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. On to the omnibus. Chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I move that matters in the omnibus be passed by the first, most favorable roll call vote by the Committee on Committees of Rules and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Alderman Mitchell, motion to adjourn.
There being no further business before this body, I move that we adjourn.
Ladies and gentlemen, this meeting is adjourned.